Okay. Borodan Hov, Kryso, good morning everyone, welcome. We'll start with apologies firstly, please. Megan, do you have any?
No, I haven't received any apologies for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. Point two, any declarations of interest that haven't already been recorded that need to be reported, please? Thank you. My chair's announcement is just simply to welcome everybody to the first substantive meeting. We did have a previous one on the 12th of February, but this is the first time that we meet with new personnel in place and four commissioners here or online. And welcome you all to moving this meeting forward. We've got a lot of items on the agenda to get through and I look forward to us debating and discussing them in reasonable detail and getting any questions that we wish answered. So I move then to minutes of the last meeting, as I said, held on February 12th. I'll take us through page by page and matters arising per page, so we'll do it simultaneously, okay? It's an easier way of doing it. So it's page five in your minutes, it's the first page, so do we have anything there, please? No? Okay. So page six, which is the second page, any matters arising there, please? Okay. Chair, sorry, Chief?
Yes, sorry Chair, the item in relation to the £128,000 grant funding requirement that you brought back to explain that in more detail and that is on forward with the plan now.
Okay, thank you very much. It's not a considerable sum, but it's not an insignificant sum, so we need to keep an eye on it, particularly as Welsh Government have now changed the grant funding process, so we need to be aware of that. Thank you. And page seven, we can't call, in fact, the third page of these minutes, anything there, please? Okay. Nothing. And therefore I say that those minutes are true record and that we've recorded as such. Thank you. So moving on to five, Chief Fire Officer, outstanding actions, please.
Thank you Chair. This item was to examine the outstanding action that remain on the action summary from the previous regime of governance within the service.
Yeah.
And as a result, I've reviewed all of those actions and those which were directly relevant to a previous fire authority position of often times has now passed and are no more relevant. So they've been removed. The one that remained was in relation to firefighters' pensions and this is as a result of the changes to pension that were challenged and the remedy exercise that referred to ASML. And that remedy exercise has a requirement for people who are within scope to have their pensions amended and receive the additional pension payments and so on. In view of course, under the timeline that's been set for that, with the view for that timeframe potentially in 18 months and I can provide assurance that we are on track to achieve resolving and working through all of those things within that 18 month period. So I think what I was going to tell was that this action in this regard is quite topical to completely provide regular dates in the future. If you're not able to how we go in on that journey in processing all of those matters in a timely fashion.
Right, that's very positive, thank you. Any comments? Yes, Kirsty?
Well, I think I'm very happy to take it off the action log, but it would be useful to be able to have regular checkpoints to ensure that that 18 month timeframe is nearly reached too and that we have maybe more many. If that is not going to be possible, maybe we're going to see circumstances that doesn't allow that to happen. So we could find a mechanism for this to see an eye on progress or implementation of the review.
Thank you, to regular milestones then, so we can check. And we can decide whether it'll be three monthly, six monthly, whatever. That's open to discussion, thank you then.
Chair, just make a suggestion, obviously later on the agenda where we cover up the government's future governance.
Yeah.
Perhaps that's something that can be picked up as part of the people that will be with programs going forward.
Good idea, thank you very much.
That's great.
No further outstanding actions. Right, let's move on to point six, which are substantive sections on the agenda. We welcome Stephen Gury, Borodan, good morning. You've come up the top 10 quite significantly, Stephen. So instead of item seven, you're now going to be item number one in order to kind of find the phrase. So welcome and for both of us in the meeting, we're now looking at page 153 in our minutes. The report of the corporate services and the internal auditors. So Geraint, over to you to introduce the item, please.
Thank you Chair, I'll just introduce the report and then obviously handle the esteem as internal audit. To take us through a bit more of the detail of the areas of audit would have been completed. Obviously it's covered by the energy budget, which is a relatively important factor of this. The report sets out two sort of broad areas really, so it's looking at the internal audit plan that's been undertaken. Some of the work that was outstanding from 2223, so there was work carried over into the current financial year, some of the areas of audit. And then the work has been undertaken in 2324. And with that work being undertaken and completed, it allows the auditors to give their final audit opinion per 2223 and an interim audit opinion for 2324. The appendices within the report obviously cover off detail around the areas of audit that have been covered off. And there are some areas of outstanding work required as well, which will again slip into the next financial year. So those are outlined, those particular audit areas are outlined in paragraph 1.3 of the report. Obviously the auditors have been reporting regularly through the previous governance structure into the what was the Finance Audit Office Management Committee meeting on areas of work as they covered them off through the audit year. They obviously give an opinion against each audit area, whether it's whether there's work to do and they highlight recommendations and then they give a sort of an opinion against each audit as well, so whether it's substantial assurance, reasonable assurance or limited or no assurance at all. And you'll see that, that each audit will have a sort of a criteria and a mark against that. The auditors have obviously concluded the work for 2223, so the audit opinion is within the report. If I take it to page 156, it sets out the number of reviews that have been done in the current financial year and then for comparative purposes, the reviews that have been done previous two years and the levels of assurance that were given for each. And like I said, the assembly then work has been concluded from previous year. Paragraph 4.3 gives the auditor's opinion and then we overly start looking at paragraph 4.4. Looks forward then to the next financial year in terms of the audit areas, which in discussion with steam, the audit team, myself, the Treasurer and Lisa Muller, and I said, those are the areas of review which we think are probably the risk areas which are worth reviewing in the next financial year. Later on in the plan, it does set out a sort of three year rolling program. And as I always say, each year it is only a plan, things can change within that plan. And as and when areas are identified through the working year that perhaps come to more prominence, we can obviously move those into the plan, slip things and sort of reach the three year rolling program if necessary. But also if an emerging area comes up that requires immediate audit work, that's something that we have a discussion with and either use contingency days with the audit team or we will add additional days if necessary, if it's that higher risk that requires audit. I think I pause at that point and probably hand over to Stephen to take us probably through more of the detail of some of the areas of work that the audit is undertaking. But for information purposes, we've set up in appendix one, all the areas of review that have been undertaken and the assurance level that was given and the recommendations were made. And that's for commissioners' information really, just so they get a bit of a history of what's happened over the last financial year and previously, so you can see a bigger picture really. And that's not something that we normally report the full details to every meeting, it's only the actual area, areas that have been audited. But obviously this is looking back at an overall year. I think it gives you a clearer picture of what's been covered and the types of recommendations that are being made. So happy to take any questions at that point or do you want to hand this straight to Stephen?
Thank you very much Geraint for that detail, that's most helpful. My comment to begin with is that while there are areas for improvement, and there's quite a number of areas for improvement, nothing is at a risk level. And there are some areas of green in there as well, which is good. So you know, let's focus on the positive because there's been such a lot of negativity. Let's look at what we are doing well and there are areas clearly we need to do better, but you know, in terms of a first look at this report, it's a lot better than either, that's a good start. I don't know if any other, my fellow commissioners, if anyone's got a comment? Bitch, yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Borodan. I was just trying to inquire about how the audits are targeted. It says that we've got an annual audit inspection program, but is it linked to the risk register or is it linked to any other particular factors that determine who determines what's in the schedule of audits for the year? Thanks.
Excellent. Obviously that, as I said, that's done in conjunction with myself, the Treasurer, Lisa, who's head of finance from the service, and then in discussions with the internal audit team, so that that sort of sets a framework for the plan. We do consider the corporate risk register, but we also consider wider risks across the sector and the sort of wider risks within the public sector as a whole. TIAA, as our internal auditors, they've got many clients within the public sector, including emergency services, local authorities, health boards, et cetera, housing associations. So they sort of bring in a wider picture as well into what emerging risks are happening across the wider sector as well. And if there's things happening nationally, perhaps outside of the public sector, cyber risk for example, which may be nationally, those type of things are flagged up and added into the program.
Right, so there is a correlation with our risk register? Or does it mean that our risk register needs to reflect? There's correlation, okay, thank you.
Thank you Kirsty.
Thank you Geraint. So at the moment, customer practice has been designed, please, to, on your internal audit, please, to look at the risk register, to align audit with risk register and other factors that you consider. The DEAF fire authority have any say in the audit plan and choosing topics in the audit plan?
Yeah, well, as I said, that was the purpose. We present the plan to the finance committee and then obviously bearing in mind what suggestions we'd make, it was always the option to amend the plan at that point or later upon through the year as things emerge.
Okay, so I appreciate that it's flexible. I'm just wondering before presenting the plan, whether there is an earlier opportunity to shape the plan rather than being presented with the plan, so that a wider group of people maybe have the opportunity to feed into the audit plan. Ultimately, of course, you have to decide what portion it, what's doable within the year, the resource of financial and human to do with today. I'm just wondering whether we could think about whether it's possible to have a wider feedback into the first draft of the plan before bringing it forward?
It's probably worth mentioning the informal part that process is, when we've got a draft plan together, I take it through to head service, so they get sight of all the areas of coverage and then it comes through to what was SMT, which is now SLT, to fulfill the scrutiny before it goes through to any fire authority. So there is that informal consultation process.
And then can I just double check, so the paper says, sorry.
No, 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 carry on.
The paper says that once the audit has been completed, findings then go to audit and finance committee for follow up on the recommendations. How then did the audit and finance, did they report back to the fire authority overall on implementation?
Not as a direct report, but obviously the minutes of each of those committees would be reported back to the fire authority.
It would be usual practice for those conversations to be had within the committee and then the follow up and approval and assurance given through the committee. That would then be given the final approval from the authority.
Just one additional bit of assurance that as part of the audit plan, there's always a follow up at the end of the year. So the audit team follow up on all the recommendations that they've made during the year and that's in itself an additional report as well, so to make sure that progress is being made in the recommendations.
I mean, clearly, as my fellow commissioners have demonstrated, what we're looking at from here on in is ways of working in order to improve what we can, in order to, you know, dig down into the detail where we need to, because we are bringing it a different level of governance. And within that difference, we will ask lots of questions. So bear with us, we're not being difficult, we're just being supportive and we're trying to ensure that we make things better. And so if we have questions, it's because it's not perhaps practice that we experienced in our previous roles in areas of governance. So we will be asking questions, thank you. And in plenty of time for Stephen Gury, I'd now like to welcome you to the meeting and your comments, please. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. The thing further to add to what Geraint said already, I think, in terms of, just to be clear on some of the documents, the annual report for 2324 is indicative of this stage. As Geraint says, there is still some work ongoing. The work that has begun may not have an effect on the overall opinion at this stage, so we're still expecting it to be reasonable assurance overall. But that work is programmed in, it's either begun and the fieldwork's completed and we're waiting for the draft report to come to the service or the fieldwork itself has begun. We're waiting for that to conclude. In terms of the plan, again, just to reiterate what Geraint says, we had that conversation. We always bear in mind the risks of the service and we also try to bring in the kind of risks across each of the sectors that we work in as well, to give that kind of rounded kind of audit universe, if you like, in terms of how we plan in the document. And again, to reiterate again, it is, it comes to us as a draft, it's not set in stone, it can change at any time, either by priority or even a kind of fixed point we can think about, having a look at it again in six months, for example. We do that with some of our clients, we can do that. The other thing perhaps just to bear in mind is that you can't see it in this pack because we've got the annual report, but each committee will bring a progress report, which sets out what we've done in the previous period, but also what we're doing going forward, so you have sight of the audits and the reviews that are coming up. So you can ask questions about those and then consider any kind of matters relating to those as you go forward as well. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions for Stephen, please? There we are, well you've got to wait easily then, Stephen, on that one. Any other further comments on any aspects of this report, please?
Just add one, Chair, is obviously with the audit opinions being presented and signed off approved today, they then go forward and put into the annual governance statement, which will come further on the work program for the finance committee. And that then gets fed into the annual statement of accounts, which covers all of our financial statements and then that in itself gets audited by Audit Wales as part of their financial audit statement.
I was wondering if Audit Wales was going to make an appearance. I've dealt with them very, very well in the past and I hope to continue that good relationship.
Just on that point, we do invite Audit Wales to every single weekend, so they have received an invite for today. They obviously haven't got any agenda items to present, but normally they would expect representation at all meetings, but I don't understand that, probably in the resource wise as well.
Okay, well we keep that open invitation and we look forward to seeing them when they can. Thank you, thank you Stephen, we're done with that item and you're very welcome to stay, but I realise you have other business, so if you do, you know, if you need to go, that's very good and we look forward to meeting you at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you, I will listen on this occasion, that's okay, thanks everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the agenda as done, so we're going back to page 13 now. The paid policy statement and Alison, I believe it's your item.
Thank you Chair. So as commissioners will be aware, this report is required to publish its paid policy statement every year. This is a forward looking statement, so this is the statement for the year 202425. It sets out a very clear policy position on all things that relate to pay. What I have done, and you will notice this version compared to last year's, I tweaked the formatting to make it an easier read and sort of more visually appealing. And just to highlight where we've made amendments since the last publication. So as noted in the covering report, the paid policy statement records any decisions that we've made in relation to changes related to pay. Last year, we employed an external reward and pay consultant who reviewed principal officers' pay and we made decisions in relation to head of service salaries, which was around making sure we could keep our pay through salaries at head of service level. So the paid policy statement has been updated to reflect those changes. And the only thing that I wanted to flag was that the Morris Report into the culture of fire and rescue services did recommend that we review and pause all temporary promotions, just to flag that we have started that work.
Yeah.
And you will see some changes going forward in terms of permanently recruiting into some of those roles. So that process has begun already. The final thing probably to mention is as pay awards are negotiated and agreed by the NJC, we will update the statement, so you will see that some pay awards are noted that the last time we were updated was for example April 2023. So we are waiting in the wings for the negotiated settlement for our corporate employees that is effective from the 1st of April, but there's no news on that at the moment. As we get it, we will update the statement.
Well, it's next week, so we've had that.
Yes, absolutely.
Chief, it tends to be usual practice for the decision to take place sometime after the fact. But that area is certainly placed, so for example firefighters pay is often not settled until July, all the time and then updated to June, so that's usual practice.
Right, well that's, thank you for that, so useful piece of information, because I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, I mean that, you know, point 2.5 was something that I was going to highlight, but you've already done it because the issue of temporary promotions pay was a significant issue for us and I'm very glad to hear that that has now commenced and that we are working on it. And pay, Kirsty?
Yeah, I just agree, I'm really glad to see mention of the Morris Report in the papers to reflect the situation that we're in ourselves in. And I'm just wondering, asking back, how, what are the mechanisms all the committees, that that work is going to be monitored and reported back on and then reported back up to this group?
Yes, so I would see that being taken to the people committee and then feeding into this committee.
I mean, that's right, just out of my own mind, by the way.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything further from anyone? Carl?
Thank you Chair, and it might be a stupid question, chime Alison, so absolutely reiterate the temporary promotion bits, but we've got a number of temporary people in the room, but I think that's really good progress. But the query was, the remuneration around executive level, is that the same across every service? Obviously, you know, just as a stupid question, Don.
Never a stupid question, Carl, sometimes we have stupid answers, but not never a stupid one.
Okay, so there are different pay levels across fire and rescue services, as we've noted. But the NJC will negotiate centrally a brigade manager's pay award. So that's one aspect, there is a standard paid increase across all principal officers. However, in our paid policy statements and many paid policy statements, you will see that, and this is enshrined in the grey book or the gold book terms and conditions, there is a two track approach. So the first part of that, so what the one track is about the centrally negotiated pay that comes via the NJC and then the other track is a locally agreed or negotiated settlement that is agreed by the relevant commissioner's board or fire and rescue authority. So that's where the levels of pay sort of are from disparate across the UK, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay Carl, yeah?
Yeah, Chair, that really does make sense Alison and I think just kind of after the optics of the pay for last year, it's just something we're going to have to keep an eye on, we're going forward.
Yes, I agree.
Right. If there's nothing further on that, thank you Alison, we move on to your next item, that's on page 45, the maternity leave provision.
Thank you Chair. Okay, so one of the recommendations in the Morris Report was to review the services' family friendly procedures policies. As a result of the Morris Report, we have set up several working groups, one of which is the Policies and Procedures Working Group. And that group is currently reviewing all our family friendly procedures. And the report seeks your approval to make one standalone change, and that's to our maternity provision procedure. We have recognized that currently we are offering four and a half months full pay when an individual takes maternity leave. This, I would suggest, is behind the curve when benchmarked with other local authorities and both the public and private sector more widely. In parallel to our look at our procedures, the fire brigade union have been campaigning to increase maternity pay to a full 52 week, fully paid. So this report suggests that we make a standalone decision on our maternity provision and that we increase our full paid maternity leave from four and a half months to 52 weeks. There is a cost in the report in section 3.1. We currently have six employees on maternity leave, paid maternity leave, so we would obviously need to review those if the decision is approved today. And as you will see, we have a total of 306 females employed in service currently when compared to our full establishment of around 1700 people. So we have an ambition to improve the diversity makeup of the organization, in particular the gender balance. And that is an ambition of ours, which we are currently working through. So the cost is not significant at this point and even looking forward, projecting over the next four to five years, we don't see that cost increasing significantly, although as I say, we have an ambition to improve the gender profile within the organization. So I guess that's as much as I want to say by way of an introduction, it is a good thing to do. It will position us as an employer of choice and, you know, it will support our recruitment and retention strategy for email inquiry.
Thank you Alison, my first comment after this is not only is it a good thing to do, I think it sends a clear message of wider changes that are put in this organization. And if we can be sector leading, and I note Greater Manchester Westminster Kent and Fire and Rescue recently announced it, so you know, we would be sector leading Wales in doing that. And that can only be good in the light of everything that's happened. So as the commissioners have to decide on this, I now open up to questions from my colleagues. Kirsty, thank you.
Thank you so much Alison, and I really welcome this report coming forward today. I just want to get on the record, the costing's outlined in table 3.1. Are you saying to me, and is the finance, head of finance saying to me, that it's affordable than the budget of the organization? Any concerns from finance about affordability?
No, not at all, it's not significant in the scheme of things. It's not budgeted, but we can make arrangements to flex the budget to accommodate it.
So finance, so finance is saying that it is affordable, that's great. And then I'd just be interested if you're a bit more detailed about page two of the work really, that is outlined in the paper, about how that is going to look, what's that going to include? Um, about, you know, what, how that is going to look, what's that going to include? And I think, yeah, just really good to hear a bit more about time scales and what that was going to be like.
Yeah, certainly. And so obviously, this is a priority for us. This is one of our priority pieces for us because it does impact on our strategies, like our recruitment strategy, which is a key area of activity for us. So I think the phase two aspect will be a wider look at the maternity provision as a whole. So as it says in the report, so facilities for breastfeeding. And what does a return to work look like for a female firefighter? You know, it's a physical role, so how do we face that return back in? How do we keep in touch with our female firefighters when they're on maternity leave? Making sure that provision is there, are there fitness check-ins and all of that sort of stuff? So that's on the sort of firefighter aspects, but the similar would apply with that, the physical aspects to our corporate employees. So just making sure that provision is benchmarked both across public and private sectors, for me.
Yes, obviously, one of the aims here is to make this organization, you know, a great place to work and a place where people want to work. So I'm just wondering whether this maternity piece of work fits in a wider piece of work around other responsibilities that all the workforce may have, so shared parental leave, paternity leave, adoption and fostering leave, carers' responsibilities for, you know, older relatives. So is this part of a wider piece of work so that all employees can, you know, avail themselves of those opportunities?
Absolutely, yes. So our family-friendly policies will incorporate that way sweet. And again, you know, I would expect us to benchmark not just against our local authority members, but more widely. I would like to see us being, you know, world-leading in our family-friendly policy approach.
Very good indeed. Carl, Vich, do you have any comments? Yes, Carl, firstly, thanks.
Yeah, but firstly, Alison, really liked the piece of work, but a few questions and kind of thoughts ready. I suppose one around cost, absolutely, you know, it doesn't feel disproportionate when you look at the cost of the events. But I suppose if our aspiration gets out of a much higher female representation in the organization, we're going to have to bear in mind the cost is potentially going to exponentially go up, you'd hope, wouldn't you? So there's a kind of quid pro quo there, isn't it? We're more family-friendly, we get a lot more women wanting to work for us, but actually the cost of that goes up. But that's just one of those things. The qualifying period, Alison, is there a qualifying period for the maternity? So, you know, do they have to work, for example, for a certain period of time with us before that? So that was one question. And are we saying this is full maternity cover all the way through, as in full pay, rather than probably what I'm used to, which is chunk at the time, which is full, and then you're on to statutory maternity on it? And then the third bit, sorry, is around paternity and paternity leave, and where does that sit going forward? So, yeah, a few questions there, sorry.
Yeah, okay. So there are standard qualifying periods for eligibility. So you will see we're using the term eligible employees. So yes, you're absolutely right. Females have to be employed with us within a certain timeframe frame in order to qualify for full paid. And we are suggesting that this is full pay. So this is not ninety percent of pay, this is full pay for the fifty-two weeks. And sorry, I lost your third question. Paternity, yes, absolutely. So I think it picks up on the point that Kirsty made. Our paternity leave provision needs a review and refresh. And again, I would see that being picked up by the policy working group as part of this priority piece around family-friendly procedures and policies, linking back to the Morris Report regulations.
Carl, are you okay with that?
No, yeah, yeah, thanks, Alison. I think, you know, bearing in mind, we're talking about full pay, and again, I fully support. But I do think that takes us above and beyond pretty much anybody else in the public sector. So, you know, policing has always been pretty generous. That was thirteen weeks and twenty-six weeks. So I think it's still the right thing to do, especially with our service profile and what we were aspiring to. But it will, it will kind of take us above and beyond, I think, Alison.
Yeah. Yeah, Chair, can I just raise something, the call raised there? So some probably have to be aware of, it's an organization, absolutely the right thing to do, the right signal. But if you'd liked the whole life course, for example, so if one of the employees was in a leadership position or a managerial position, then what we probably haven't captured, we need to capture is the cost of backfilling behind that individual for the twelve months as well. So whilst there's an immediate figure there, the bit of work, you know, for the whole life course would be, what are the costs then to put someone in there for the twelve months? And so that would give us a, when it comes to future budget setting, it will probably put us on the front foot, I suppose, to.
Thanks for that point. Thank you.
Just to add, Chair, the, the situation currently, and I completely concur, this is exactly the right thing to do, by the way. But the situation currently would be that somebody would return from maternity leave and wouldn't be able to come back to full operational capacity anyway. They would often, if they were particularly if they were breastfeeding, they would not be riding fire engines. We would have to find them other meaningful work to do. So they would be over-established anyway. So I think that this is entirely the right thing to do to allow people, young families to come back to work and be fully able to respond in their full capacity when they return after twelve months.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point, yes, because, you know, one, one always has to bear in mind for firefighters, the physical attributes of the role. You didn't have to do the classroom orders, you could keep the door shut and the noise down, people didn't notice. There we are. Honestly, that wasn't a thing. Okay, so it is for the commissioners to approve an extension of the current arrangements of maternity pay for fifty-two weeks on full pay for eligible employees. Do I have everyone's?
Agreed.
Agreed, agreement, yes?
Yep.
Agree.
Thank you very much. Good, well, and in tandem, the gender pay gap, page forty nine, Alison, from you.
Thank you, Chair. So by way of introduction to this report, as commissioners will be aware, any employer who employs two hundred and fifty people or more is required to publish its gender pay gap each year. And this is the difference between the average pay of men and women in an organization, and it's a snapshot. So it's taken as a snapshot in time. This gender pay gap report data is taken as of thirty first of March twenty twenty three, so not twenty four. And we are given twelve months to publish our gender pay gap and upload it into the go dot U K website. So we have a few days to publish it. And highlights in terms of where we are currently, what you will see in terms of the numbers is that we are moving in the right direction. So the appendix highlights the current snapshot figures as of thirty first of March. And I'm just working across to the appendix. So what you will see in appendix one is that compared to last time we reported, which was March twenty two, we reported a mean figure of eleven point eight one percent. For twenty twenty three, this figure is reduced to eight point eight four percent. Median figure is also reduced from eight point eight five percent to seven point four percent. So in terms of the headline, we are moving in the right direction. Having looked at some of the data that we have drawn out as of thirty first of March twenty twenty three, I can see that we have increased the number of female contracts when compared to the twenty twenty two figure. So there is an increase there. As I say, this is a snapshot of data. The situation may change next year because we may have less females, let's hope not. But as I say, it's quite a sort of volatile look at a point in time. But the good news is for this year, it's moved in the right direction.
Good, and clearly we hope to be on that upward trajectory. And any comments, Kirsty?
If it's possible to just, I mean, super picky, I might apologize. So on page fifty four of the pack, so this is the actual.
Yeah.
On that port, on the second page, halfway down, it says, as part of our recruitment and attracting strategy, that paragraph, with focus groups to better understand how we break down any perceived barriers to females. That's kind of like putting a manual women, that you have, that you have a perception that this is not an organization for you. I would argue that there are real barriers for women doing it. So I think if you could just remove the word perceived, that would be, that would be fine. Otherwise, I think it's almost accusatory to say, well, it's all in your mind, which is the age-old, the age-old drubbed women, drubbed women, isn't it? It's all in your mind. There's nothing wrong here, nothing to see here. It's all in your mind. So if you could get rid of that word, I'd be much happier.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
I think that's easily doable, isn't it? Edit, delete.
Yeah.
And Carl, please.
Yeah, again, Alison, thank you for the paper. Thank you, Chair. And I suppose one point and then one question. I suppose the point is, this is a really difficult area, isn't it? Because sadly, a lot of our lowest-paid staff are females in cleaning roles, et cetera. So, you know, you've only got to look around the table there, you know, the vast majority are males. So the disproportionality impact of the gender pay gap is massive, isn't it? When you're trying to close out in the middle is really difficult. And ultimately, the only way we can do that is progression through the organization at a more senior level to kind of flatten that off. So that was the point. I suppose the queries, once we all publish around the fire service, around some benchmarking, actually around the, you know, you know, the, it's great to see the difference. But actually, where does that join a line across all the other fire services around where do we are more broadly, really? So probably a piece of work, Alison, maybe going forward around that.
You can.
Yes, absolutely. And it's quite a quick job to look at go dot U K because all the gender pay gaps are published on the site. So we can do a bit of quick and dirty work around how we compare. I guess the only caveat is obviously where we are in our, in our journey will be different potentially to other organizations, but we can do that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Vich.
Thanks. It was the same point as Carl is, because we can have the direction of travel, we can be making progress, but relatively useful to understand. Certainly in relation to the other brigades in Wales, and if there were any other comparators, so that we know that, are we behind the curve? Or are we ahead of the curve? Are we in the middle of it? That sort of thing. So it's exactly the same point. Thanks.
Thank you. And any other further comments, please? No, so it's for us to approve the twenty twenty three gender pay gap report? Yes?
I agree.
Yeah. Right. Thank you very much, everyone. So point four, sub-agenda here. Page fifty five, treasury and management strategy. Lisa, please.
Thank you, Chair. And so as agreed this morning, I've got a presentation to run through with you on. And following that, I'll take you back then to the cover report and the purpose of the report and the recommendations. So if I could get the presentation up and just be sure to share that with our colleagues on screen. Can we confirm we can see that?
All good.
Okay, only six slides. So the first slide covers off a definition, a separate definition of what treasury management is. So in blue, you've got management of borrowing, investments and cash flows, including banking, money market and capital market transactions. That's the first point of treasury management. And the second part of that is the effective control of risks associated with those activities in pursuit of optimum performance. So there's a game of two parts there. The first part is very much about what? It's about cash. And the second bit is about how we do that in terms of our risk profile. And so the board of commissioners are required to operate a balanced budget, which by and large means that the cash raised during the year is spent during the year. And there's no, I think the danger to keep in mind here for commissioners is where expenditure exceeds the income set for the year. So the first function of treasury management is about cash flow management, we can see that. And cash flow management, what that is about is liquidity. So you probably use the term that cash is like the lifeblood flowing through any organization. Cash is king if you're outside in private sector.
Sounds like a black cab driver. I always say that to him, I want to pay my car.
Cash is king. And there's actually lots of examples of profitable companies that go under because they can't manage their cash flow. So we need to keep that swirling through the system. So having cash available when we need on a day-to-day basis is really important. And then invest in any surpluses that we've got, spreading our risk among our company parties and making sure we maximize any returns then to plough back into the system and support the budget. So that's the first bit of treasury management. The second bit is to fund our capital investment activities. And so we don't get a share of capital funding, chiefly probably away from North, in which we don't get an allocation as we get a revenue stream. So any borrowing, any capital investment is done through borrowing another bits and pieces. I'll take a quick detail there in due course. So treasury management is really important because it supports the organization's solvency position. And that's a word you've probably come across before. And what solvency means is being able to meet your payment requirements as they fully do. When you can't meet those payment requirements, you are what we will term insolvent. So it is really important. So the operation of the finance team to try and take that back down into a practical understanding is to minimize the cost of borrowing, because the cost of borrowing is charged through the revenue budget, okay? And the investment opportunities that we can see are maximized. And we get the return that we need within our risk profile. And that is set within the context of a SLI model, and I'll go through that in a bit. And that liquidity is maintained. So that's what your finance team will be doing for you. It's about minimizing cost borrowing, maximizing return within the risk appetite, and then maintaining liquidity. Thank you, Anna. Next slide. So what I tried to do here is just go through what the requirements are for the service. As you can imagine, with money management, there's a lot of regulation and legislation there. And the top four points are the regulatory assignments that we have. The second bit there is the practical operation of treasury management, and that occurs through the scheme of delegation and through the role of the treasurer or the responsible finance officer. So the legislation keeps us informed and protected and compliant. So it's important that we are cognizant of that. And the practical aspects of treasury management are really around that scheme of delegations. And there are some responsibilities there for the board of commissioners. And they're around what you're doing right now. So receiving and reviewing reports on treasury management activities and practices and reviewing the annual strategy. So this report that you've received today is very much a forward-looking report. This is seen set up for the year, okay? Also to approve any amendments that occur through the year, because we know when we set a strategy in place, we've got to try and address any changes with treasury management. It's not all about internal occurrences. There's a lot of market factors that will affect our treasury position. And the budget consideration. So treasury is not an abstract concept. It does tie in very fundamentally with our capital budget and our revenue budget. It pulls those two strands together. And the division of responsibilities to receive.
Sorry, I hate to cut across you, but I know everyone should know the difference between capital and revenue.
Yes.
But not everybody does.
Would you like me to?
If you could just.
I can.
Clearly note that for us. It was the biggest thing I had to deal with with my counselors. Nobody understood that.
Yeah, okay.
So I want us to know, you know it.
Right. So revenue activities, revenue budget that we have is funded throughout ten local authorities that accommodates and services the running needs of the organization. So it will look at things like salaries, utilities, stationery, stuff like that, that we need and we consume within a twelve-month period. So it's generally, our revenue budget is high in value, it's ninety million pounds, but it's, you know, there's a lot of elements in there. If I contrast that with the capital budget, the capital budget is very much an investment piece, okay? So it looks at lower value, lower volume of items, so things like our buildings, our fleet, our infrastructure, investment in infrastructure for comms and I C T. It's those bits that are higher in value and lower in volume, but those elements stay with us for a longer period of time. They tend to be with us for more than a five-year period. Very different to revenue. This ten, I use it two million a year. So high volume, high value, yeah, high volume, low value items, okay? Sorry, forgive me, I'm ashamed that I didn't realize this. And you don't have a capital stream from. Sorry, forgive me. I'm, I'm ashamed that I didn't realise this. And you don't have a capital stream from Welsh Government?
No.
So we fund, so we fund our ourselves. Our local authorities is the X seven award as well. But we, which is probably, if I set the revenue and the capital budgets in front of you now, you've seen ninety million for revenue.
Yeah.
And all the different headings that we have. If I set the capital in front of you, it's much, much smaller. It's about forty million. And the reason for that is we don't receive funding.
The one exception to that, Chair, is, is through national resilience funding and community funding, so grant funding for specific items.
Yes, yes. And we've been fortunate in the last couple of years to receive those things from Welsh Government because we would never have hoped to have done them on our own. Um, the two budgets are linked together.
You're having to borrow.
Yes.
And then that's an consequence of your revenue, yeah.
So our borrowing consequences to invest in capital, the financing of that, so interest, salary charges are all funded through revenue. So there's an affordability link there.
Yeah.
And that's why one is so much bigger than the other. But you will see that now with your finance committees that are coming through next and information there.
It's, it's such an important understanding.
Yeah.
Which is why I wanted to exemplify it, you know, and, and with our borrowing, it's, you know, whether we're at risk, like, you know, the Icelandic bank issue, I remember it well. So, you know, we need to become, you know, aware of.
Yes.
Consequences.
I understand the report didn't lose anything without.
Not a penny.
Chris, Chris is very proud of, of that.
He was an excellent head of finance, treasurer. Um, okay, sorry, Lisa, please carry on.
So just finishing off the, the scheme of delegations, responsibilities for commissioners. Um, you receive revenue, uh, regular monitoring information, um, and approve through your offices the appointment of, uh, treasury advisors. So whilst you've got your finance team, we also, um, we've got a contract with LINK who are specialist treasury advisors. What they do for us is they scan the economic environment for us and create information like interest rates, inflation, all our specialist niche information that we could hope to, to do day-to-day. They, they do that for us and we work with them very well. Uh, and they help us prepare the information that you, that you've seen in this pack. Um, also, the, the next, in the scheme delegations, the next, um, position that's key there is the, the treasurer and the section one, one-two officer. And they will be making the, uh, recommendations to commissioners and advising commissioners on what you need to be aware of in terms of risks and challenges. Um, it will all, they will also compile treasury management practices that the finance team will act on your behalf. Um, and just ensure that there's a, an appropriate resource there for treasury management activities.
They keep us legal, in other words.
They do, and safe. So this next bit is, um, about our capital strategy prudential indicators. What you would have noticed in your packs is that, um, this is a good, um, table here. This sets out the capital strategy and it asks. Wait, I don't know. I am going to the rolling document.
Range sixty-five.
Yes, sixty-five, yes. Sorry, I couldn't know where it went. What this does is it, it sets the, the, um, capital investment budget for next year and two subsequent years. So you've got a three-year look there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's asking commissioners to approve that level of budget. Um, it's quite important, um, the, the, the capital, um, budget, as we just discussed, that's what drives, um, the second half of our treasury management activity. Um, and it, it gives us a short to medium-term capital investment plan. So the next bit, after, after knowing and understanding what we need to invest in, is actually financing that. And you'll see underneath there, um, capital spending across the top, you'll see the different elements of financing that we tap into. And you've got something that's called CERA, which is capital expenditure from revenue account. Every year in the revenue budget, we set aside two hundred thousand pounds to help prop up our capital investment. We also, as, as Chief just described, we enjoy and we have enjoyed our capital, um, grants um, for national resilience more pointedly and capital receipts. The important thing for commissioners to be aware of with capital receipts is that that is a ring-fenced fund. Okay? So you cannot use your capital receipts to pay for revenue activities. It is for capital investment only. So just be aware of that when we come back to with information. Most of our capital receipts are, uh, gained from vehicle sinks. Um, time to time, we'll have a, a land disposal. Um, we haven't had one for a good number of years now, have we? Um, and, and that's about it for capital receipts. The other element that we are seeing a, a growth area in is, uh, partner contributions. Uh, in recent years, that's been more about co-location contributions for capital adjustments to our building portfolio. A good example of that would be Barry, um, where, where Shamburn Service came in with us today to share the site. And if we have to make capital adjustments to our buildings that are not what we need, it's what our partner needs, we would work that in, but they would be paying for the capital element of that.
Okay.
In terms of co-location, a growth area, there is that capital contribution, but we also have revenue contribution in terms of the running element of that. So there's two aspects to that, um, co-location. What you're seeing there, that capital contribution you can see in that table relates to the work that we are to do with joint fire control and the new system that's going to be coming in, we started to look at already, haven't we? So it's the command and control system.
That's what you say, yeah.
So that would be their half of a shared system with us. And that's where you can see they have over sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty and a million.
From Middle West Wales.
From Middle West Wales, yes.
Okay.
What we have also done as well as part of that financing piece for investment is utilised reserves. Um, a good example of that would be the, uh, real fire training, um, facility at Cardiff Gate. We didn't borrow to fund that. We used five and a half million pounds of our own reserves to fund it. What that did is we had the money there. It negated the need for that financing cost to run through our revenue budget then.
Okay, yeah. So you weren't paying any interest on it.
Yeah, yeah. We don't borrow specif- for specific projects. It's more done on a holistic, um, piece. Um, but yes, effectively, we didn't borrow because we had the money there. So you've got your capital levels. You've got the financing of capital. And then the next, uh, indicator that commissioners need to be aware of is the CFR or capital financing requirement. It's a key prudential indicators for, uh, commissioners to be cognisant of. Um, what you've got in this pack is an under-borrowed position. It's at the bottom of the table there. Um, warning signal is usually when we are consistently overborrowed. So if you're overborrowed, which means our debt exceeds our capital financing requirement. So we undertake prudential borrowing in this organisation as do many local authorities.
Yeah.
That is not a hard limit. It is put together through investment plans, repayment plans, and that's how we arrive at our capital of CFR. So our debt should not exceed that limit only in the short term. When it does, it will suggest a solvency issue.
Okay.
I.e. borrowing to run revenue activities. So just be cognisant of that. Okay? Um, so we're in an under-borrowed position. You can see there for next year, I'm looking at seventeen million difference between external debt and CFR moving up to eighteen point eight and eighteen point four. So commissioners can take some, uh, comfort in the fact that we are not looking at reaching that danger zone. It doesn't increase indefinitely CFR. It increases with capital investment, but it is reduced by MRP charges run through the revenue budget. So, so capital investment will increase the CFR or our underlegally to borrow. But MRP, which is minimum repayment provision or repayment of debt, that's, that's the useful way to think about it, that will reduce your CFR. So it doesn't run indefinitely. An MRP is a little bit like a provision, a depreciation provision in the, uh, revenue budget. Because it reflects the economic useful life of asset that we've purchased. So it's just repaying off the debt that we've undertaken to invest in that item. Okay? Um. So CFR really is an indicator of how well we are managing our budget. We've got a new, um, benchmark, uh, an indicator for commissioners to be aware of. There was an overhaul of the, um, code, SIP for codes in two thousand and twenty-one. It hit, it hit us for the first time last year, and that's called the liability benchmark. And really, that just provides, um, commissioners with a range, and you'll see this table here. It provides you with a range of, of where you're borrowing, if sipping, um, to be able to assess whether we are within the range that we find acceptable. And this tells us that we are. And I've just touched on, um, MRP, the minimum, um, revenue provision. It's the, it's the provision for the repayment of borrowing. MRP charges are funded from the revenue budget. So any borrowing we undertake will impact our revenue position. There are various, uh, policies available for commissioners to choose. We have been consistent with previous policies. What that policy will do for you is tell you how you charge the revenue budget. What we have there committed is fit for purpose. I would suggest that we continue with that. And the detail of it is contained within that report for you. Okay? Like to move on, Anna. So this is our treasury, um, our, our borrowing strategy. I think I've ticked off all the big bits for you, but I, I'll run through these headline, um, um, headlines in a piece. Your borrowing strategy is basically, um, what your CFR is telling you you need to borrow. Um, what we've got in this report, the indicators and limits and ratios are things you can employ to make sure you are um, managing that borrowing strategy. So we have a few things there that are called the, um, operational, um, boundary and the authorized limit. What that operation, so to set then, I look at the CFR, how that tracks through with our future investment plans. So I tend to set our operational boundary according to that. It tracks it, not exactly, because I give us some headroom. Um, so if we breach that, uh, commissioners need to be aware of and ask questions as to why we would breach that.
Yes.
Yeah. Is it a consistent breach or is it a one-off for a particular reason? A particular reason would be economic conditions are saying that, uh, a bit provocative. Uh, interest rates are going to skyrocket within the next six months. We would take possibly the next year or two's worth of borrowing now, which would push up, push us over our, our borrowing plans for this year because we don't want to tie ourselves into long-term, higher rate debt. Okay? But that would be a short-term fix and we would bring a report back to you to explain why that has happened. Okay? Um, the authorized limit is a hard limit. So that's something that we would not breach. And that really is the, the, the danger, the danger zone. Um, you've got something there called the ratio of financing costs to revenue stream. Um, in the report, you will see something, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we are looking at five point seven four. Um, you've got projections there for future years of seven point three seven. And I think that for me, if that hits ten percent is my view, ten percent or above, that's where, um, you have to assess whether your capital aspirations are affordable in your revenue budget.
Okay.
Because the more borrowing you undertake, the more cost in your revenue budget. And we know there's already pressure there. Yeah. So it's about managing that pressure. There's also something called the maturity structure of debt. What that does for you is manage your risk. Uh, when I talk about risk, it, it's, it's about making sure that we have got the repayment of debt all falling within one period.
Yeah.
And you can see from the, the table there, there is a spread of repayments, um, there across from what's immediately needing to be repaid and what needs to be repaid in twenty years plus.
That is a spread, actually.
It's, it's a long-term view with, with your debt portfolio. Together with that, with making your, um, borrowing, uh, decisions, you need to reference the interest rate forecast. And this is what LINK do for us. And you can see that the Monetary Policy Committee met last on the twenty-first of March and, and they agreed to maintain Bank of England rate of five point two five percent. And we know that most borrowing then is predicated on that, uh, interest rate. The, um, table for prospects for interest rates will give you a longer-term view of that. And that helps, helps us time our borrowing then.
You mentioned this to the Chancellor of you. He knows.
He does. He's based on all his information. We haven't had a personal conversation. So we know that, um, the second half of two thousand and twenty-four, um, our rates are going to, um, decrease. So what we've tried to avoid is borrowing long-term now because that tends to tie us into higher rates for longer. So you, you will see that we have undertaken two and a half million pounds' worth of borrowing in February. We tried to do that for a three-month period. Um, and we tried to go out to our local authority partners to get that, but unfortunately it didn't work.
Is that because they're in such dire straits financially?
I thi- I think you have to have available cash to, to lend. Um, with PWL B, uh, they don't lend less than a twelve-month, so it's really difficult.
Yeah.
So what we had to do is take out a twelve-month, um, loan until we are sure that the rates are going to, uh, drop, and they will drop according to this. Uh, and that loan unfortunately is a little bit more expensive than what we have been paying at five point seven percent. Our average debt book rate up until that borrowing was taken was three point eight. It's very low.
That is low, yes.
Very low. But, so we've got that short-term, twelve-month loan, two and a half million.
Yes.
When that matures, we'll be able to look at something a little bit more longer term. Because we can see from this table here that that's going to go down by a percentage, uh, point, which will make all the difference if you're going to borrow fifteen, twenty years plus.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So that's the strategy at.
And that rate would be, would remain for that term?
We only undertake fixed-rate borrowing. We don't do variable rate borrowing. And the reason for that is, again, risk. And we prefer to have certainty in the revenue budget.
Okay.
Because if they do skyrocket, you can't in that. Uh, it's very, very difficult to manage variable rate borrowing.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, it mentions the borrowing advice. I've gone over, um, the LINK impact there uh, and the borrowing strategy. And what we have done, we borrowed in February, short terms as just described. We hadn't borrowed for four years previous to that. So December two thousand and twenty was the last time we borrowed. And the strategy was to, um, use internal cash reserves to pay for capital investment where we could because then we were avoiding the cost of financing in the revenue budget. And we've managed to do that successfully. Um, in terms of borrowing advance of need, I'd suggest that we don't. Why, why would you? Um, I think you've got a framework there with capital investment plans for the next three years. That provides your borrowing framework and your borrowing need. And I think it's best to stick to that. We don't undertake debt rescheduling, as I just described. The net average book rate is very low. It's not worth us rescheduling now because it would be hanging out. Um, and then it moves us on to sources of borrowing, which you will see a list there. We tend to borrow only with PWL B. We have undertaken, um, zero interest rate borrowing with, um, what would you call it?
The Salex fund.
Salex, but it's a.
There is a branch of the Welsh Energy Services. They, they take over the, well, Salex were a private company.
Uh-huh.
Welsh government have taken them over. Uh, and so what they do is, is interest-free funding for green initiatives and, um, carbon reduction type initiatives.
Yeah.
So, so they, they look at, uh, the programmes that they, they will fund interest-free have to deliver um, cashable savings based on reducing your carbon footprint, but also generating efficiency savings in your budget as well.
Kind of like last year's Re-Investment Bank.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's, um, uh, uh, an example where we used it previously was for, um, LED lighting on all websites.
Okay.
Uh, and we, by replacing, just on headquarters alone, replacing the, the old lighting system with LED lighting.
Yeah.
Um, it cost us, um, I think it was eighty thousand pounds to replace the lightings throughout. But it, it reduced our energy costs by approximately thirty thousand pounds each year.
Yeah.
So repaid for itself within three years.
Yes.
So, so we, we had the, the initial capital borrowing from Salex and then repaid it over that period of three years. But obviously the, the savings are ongoing.
Yeah. So generally, yeah, PWL B, interest rate borrowing, um, and we try to go with our local authority partners. That didn't work this time. But what our list does do for commissioners is it gives you a list of approved, uh, counter-parties to borrow with that we can if we need to. Um, moving on to the investment piece. So you've done the capital. Moving on to the investment piece, so you've done the capital, you've done the borrowing, we move on into investing. So our main activity for Treasury is managing our cash day to day. Borrowing less frequently and treasury less frequently again. And when we invest, we do it under the SLI model, and SLI is security, liquidity and yield, and in that order. Oh, sorry, Hannah. So previously always goes to security, and it comes back to your example, Lady Wilcox, of the Icelandic bank scenario. We want to make sure that anything we put in out to be paid back. We don't want that principal amount to be eroded in any way. Liquidity is, how quickly can we get access to it? Because we may need it, yeah? You don't want to borrow because you've tied your money up for longer than you should have, yeah? And return, that's the last bit we're looking at, some return, but we wouldn't invest just for return. The two things come before for that, security and liquidity. So we use the SLI model, and that is integrated into the coloured methodology that is provided from. And what they do is they colour code available counterparties according to our risk profile. But it's worth mentioning, there's a lot in here. I took a lot out, but there's a lot in here in regards to the two thousand and twenty one code updates. They're related to activities local authorities were now undertaking, non-Treasury investments. So local authorities are buying property, for example, to benefit from income streams further on down the road. So it's an investment piece, but it's a non-Treasury investment. You don't do things like that, it's very simple, our treasury activities, our investments are deposits, first deposits, and then a return from them.
Okay.
So I would suggest that if you were going to go down the non-Treasury investment road, you probably need to, you know, shore up the finance resources. Because it is expertise-intensive, and you need to keep a close eye on those things. So my take is, keep it simple, keep it treasury investments.
I mean, local authorities have done that in order to try and.
Yes, increase money. The pressure is on for them, I totally see why they've done it.
But we're not in that.
We're not in that sphere, no, we are not. And there's more regulation as well if you do that type of investment. So you need a closer focus in your finance team, and also that takes more resource and that takes more cost.
And there have been, not in Wales, but there have been some very unhappy examples of that in English councils.
Yes, and that's why we've seen the growth in the regulation.
Yes.
To try and make sure that local authorities are cognizant of the risks attached to that type of investment.
Yes.
Yeah. So estimated interest receivable for this current year is five hundred and forty eight thousand. So that's a positive for us, an exceeded budget. Fixed term deposits we've undertaken during the year, which we haven't done for a little while. We did two million pound last summer for thirty days, and then we did three million for a couple of months. And we got four point six two back and four point nine two respectively. So that was useful, we had a combined yield coming back of just under fifty thousand pounds. And then we used that to pop up our revenue budget. But it's not the main, you know, activity of investing. We just need to, we've got a limit with counterparties of no more than ten million pounds. So with an excess of a hundred million pounds going through our accounts every year, we can't keep more than a ten million pound limit than one counterparty. So we need counterparties to be able to spread that risk. You've probably heard of the saying, don't put all your eggs in one basket. And I think that is the treasury management activity in this respect. We received notice that our bank rates are going to drop, and we may see a decline in that level of return. And that will define because we know Bank of England rate's going to drop, our returns from our banking deposits are going to drop. So next year, the estimate is for interest receivable at four hundred thousand pounds. I'd be pleased to know this brings us to the last slide of Treasury. And it just tells commissioners about what your reporting requirements are. And in terms of Treasury, there are three statutory reports that you are to receive during the year. This is the first of three, this is the scene-setting strategy report. I'll come back to you in September with a midterm review report, it's a progress report. And then I'll come back to you again then in December, and you'll have an interim report, which will tell you from the strategy set for two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, how did we do? So you look at things like what we thought we'd been paying for interest, where our limits are, the affordability ratio. How did they actually turn out in comparison to what we thought was going to happen? With the code changes, we have to bring further reports to you through the year. We're still trying to work out how we're going to do that without it being too onerous and bombarding you with too much technical information, because it is very, very technical. And we think with our budget monitoring information, we just bring to you a warning system of, these are the limits, have we breached them, are we close, yes or no, something like that.
Yes, that sounds, you know, because this report is wonderfully detailed.
Yes.
But in terms of our responsibilities of governance, you know, we really need to know. The issues and for you to report that to us in, you know, understandable language, because this is very understandable, but it is extremely dense.
Yes.
So we would expect that level of, you know, red light if there were any.
Yes, we can do that for you. So further reporting to be determined, I see that'll occur in a very simplistic way. So that's the presentation piece done. I'll bring you back to the covering report. Thank you. Hopefully everybody on screen is back with us. Okay, so what the report is asking commissioners to do is seek approval, which is necessary in advance of each financial year. For your governance arrangements for treasury management activities. And the third part of the report is for commissioners to consider, and of oversight of the treasury management activities required to ensure adequate liquidity. And that longer-term capital plan in view, yes? And that is both prudent, sustainable and affordable. And we've just gone through all the limits and ratios that allow you to do that. The other thing with this report is, and the changes to the code, is training. And as you just said, this is quite a dense report. This is a version of training that you will receive in a year. We would be looking to keep a record of any training or exposure you have to Treasury. So if you've got anything else that you want us to include for you, a specialist session outside of the committee meetings. We can arrange that for you, and also get our link advisors in to deliver something if you wanted something more formal.
Yes, I think that would be very helpful. So we'll arrange what that is after the meeting, but I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues that, you know, the more we know.
Yes.
The better informed we are, the better decisions we can make.
Yes, great. So this report, it brings me to the end in terms of the recommendations, it's asking the commissioners to have oversight, but more specifically to approve the treasury management strategy statement. So that's what we've just run through. The agree the capital prudential indicators, as we've just discussed, and the minimum revenue policy, the borrowing strategy, treasury indicators and limits. The annual investment strategy, and that if there's any changes, or that can be internal or external in terms of market conditions. You allow the treasurer or the deputy treasurer in this instance to make those changes for you and to report back accordingly.
Thank you, well, Lisa has summed that up perfectly, thank you, Lisa, for that. Extremely helpful, pop through what is, you know, the basis of what we need to do, you know, the money. If we haven't got the money, we can't perform service, but that was very welcome and, and, you know. I felt that we've got an absolutely strong handle on what we're doing here with that level of detail. So I'll just open up to my colleague, so, Vich, yes?
Yeah, thanks very much, so very detailed presentation, Lisa, thank you. When we arrived as commissioners, we had to sign off the budget in very short order, I think within a matter of days of arriving. You mentioned that the capital investment plans for the next three years are fixed. But when we look at the KC's report, one of the recommendations on page one through five under facilities is that we're supposed to assess all the facilities, the equipment. And take steps to ensure it's fully inclusive based on the protected characteristics. And I've been to a couple of fire stations, I think one of them was Merthyr, where the facilities aren't gender compliant. And we've got a program of works that we're supposed to be looking at now, that's programmed in for a number of years. If we accelerated it, that would affect the capital investment and possibly the borrowing. Has that part of the KC's review been factored into the budgetary cycle and our capital program? Thanks.
Short answer, yes. We've got, you've got the high line capital investment figure there in the CFR table. But it is made up of individual projects, and one of those is the EDNI project. I provided a overview to the chief on exactly what that is. We did an exercise that went out to audit all our building portfolio, and we found our buildings lacking in some respects. And we rag status them, and we've been addressing them as we've gone along. And I think that we've got, Merthyr is one that we haven't got to, it's in need of greater investment than any others. And that is probably more than, it's due for a capital investment. So it's either a rebuild or a major refurb within the next five years. So I think we've got to be cognizant, if we go into ploughing half a million, and then we go into sort of raising to the ground in sort of form of, it's part of a longer term plan. But there is certainly a plan in place for that. So we're just finishing off aging facilities in both and different before we move on to Merthyr. So it is in hand, and we've been gradually addressing those short holes in our buildings the last eighteen months.
When you say gradually addressing them, what is the period by which we would say be able to say that we had achieved that particular recommendation? If we were looking at that, what's the timeframe, do you think, for that?
It was, on average, it was a two-year package of works, and that's relating to the procurement process that needed to go through. Because of course, we needed to do a process to secure contractors, and the timing of our works occurred then throughout the service. In addition to our other projects that we've got going on, which is, and we know that we've got a new rebuild there at that site. We've got, but you replace, there's lots of different things. If you wanted to go through then, we can arrange to do that. And you can have a further breakdown of all the individual elements that make up that capital budget.
I think as Vich has raised it and noted, you know, that it is part of the review and part of the report. And now I think, you know, it is a matter of importance for us to engage with that. So if you could do that, that'd be great, thank you very much. Carl, have you got any comments?
Carl had a step down.
Oh, yes, of course he did, to take that.
Yeah, you have to take it, call.
Take that, yeah, call, yeah, thank you. Kirsty?
No, just to say thank you so much, Lisa. I don't know if you've ever been a teacher, but you missed your calling because it was so well explained. Because I have to admit, coming this morning, I read it, I was like, oh, I don't know about some of their stuff, so thank you very much. I'm very happy, and it feels like you've got a real grip on this, so that's really reassuring to hear. But I really would like to take you up on the offer of some more specialist development session around Treasury.
Yeah.
And, you know, the points that Vich was making about the capital program, that we really sort of have a regular briefing and a development session of the capital program.
That's absolutely fine.
Because that's slightly different from what we're talking about today, which is treasury management.
Yes.
But it would be really great to understand, you know, how works are prioritized, you know, how issues are responded to, what that looks like in terms of, thank you.
We can set out all the areas we identified, what we've completed so far, what we have in progress and what's next. And there isn't much next, so there's some assurance there for commissioners that really it's different, a small bit indifferent in terms of hygiene facilities. So that's the loos and showers and things like that, and then Merthyr. So we could definitely go through that in detail and share that as a side meeting.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, but thank you so much, your explanation of the papers is exemplary, thank you, yeah, thank you.
Just to add, obviously I've been around and done quite a lot of station visits since I've been here, and I've actually been quite impressed by the estate. And the universe and the feeling of building, and there is still stuff to do. But there's an awful lot of work that's already gone on to bring the estate into the modern era, so.
That's really good to hear. Okay, well, it just, in that case, if there's nothing further, it just leaves me to put to commissioners that we note and approve the following items, as noted earlier by Lisa. Yeah? Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to point five, strategic themes and objectives on page fifty nine of our pack. And that's over to Gav, please. Eighty nine, sorry, yeah, eighty nine.
Yeah, thank you. The sets of the five-year update on our strategic plan, it will transfer from twenty thirty to twenty thirty. Obviously, this year is slightly different, it's been set, obviously, very much in the context of the background of the culture review and the publication of the recommendations made by Pernell Morris KC. And so where possible, obviously, we've tried to build the aspects that have been identified in that report in Switzerland. Clearly sets us on page five of the plan, the elements that were raised within the country review report. And obviously, following on from that, changes to the governance structure, which came about in the appointment of the commissioners. Again, that's been built in, and obviously the forward that was set out by, as they were as the chief fire officer in place covering up this plan. Obviously, what the plan looks to do is look at what improvements are needed in the service across all aspects of the service over the next five years, taking us up to twenty thirty. And the way that we've done that today is by publishing a plan that sets out a number of strategic themes. And on page nine of the actual opera plan document, it sets up the eight strategic themes which we've had in place for the last few years. In setting the overall objectives for the service each year, what we have to do as part of our statutory requirements. Is consult widely on what our objectives are for the year and for the forthcoming years. And what we do is run a wide-scale consultation process that runs from October to January each year. So in October, we set out what was sort of the broad basis for our objectives were, what the current themes were. And we asked for feedback, so feedback from the public, from members of staff, all stakeholders, on what their views are. Or should the strategic themes change, and what they would expect to see in plans going forward. On the basis of that consultation, there was slight changes to two of our strategic themes. So where we had engaging and communicating, that has now changed to involving communicating. And where we previously had protecting our environment, we, based on feedback, we've changed that to protecting and enhancing our environment. So the table sets out what those eight strategic themes are. And then the report flows on to show how it links in with the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act and the Five Ways of Working. Our social economic duty, social partnership and public procurement, all the elements of that that feed in. The ongoing community risk management plans. And then obviously, as a statutory partner, how we link in with the public service boards as well. The next element of the plan then shows the sort of the key themes raised within that consultation process. And obviously, you know, the period that we were going through, there was various themes that were highlighted based on the culture review. Around better and improved communications, both internally and externally. Again, you know, heavy focus on the prevention work that we do across the service. There's been a sort of a lot of work done nationally in the fire sector as a whole around on-call duty systems. And obviously, there's challenges for each service, but specifically for us, in the model that we've got and how that meets our needs going forwards. And again, you know, collaboration, we look to collaborate where possible and make. and make wider use of technology to enhance our services. The overarching plan obviously then sits alongside the various other plans that we've got in place within the service. So we have an annual improvement plan as well. We have a strategic quality plan, counterdiction plan and Welsh language monitoring plan. There's various other plans that sit alongside and underneath this plan. The rest of the plan goes into a lot of detailing of each of the strategic themes and what those themes actually mean, how we will actually do them, how we will measure them. And then it looks at what we've already done in twenty three, twenty four. But more importantly, what we look to do in twenty four, twenty five against each of those themes. So I won't go into any detail on each of those. Obviously, it is covered up in considerable detail within the plan. Obviously, as part of our statutory requirements, the main purpose of fetching this before the board today is obviously to get this published within statutory timelines to public before the end of March. So hopefully today, with the plan having gone through considerable consultation, there's been wide scale consultation throughout the organisation and we saw feedback on the various iterations of the plan. And the plan has been, still been developed over the last few days. So there's still been minor amendments and improvements made. But in front of me now, I've got the final version of the plan, which is a bit more glossy and you know, a bit more professional looking document than is in the pack. But the plan, I think, is ready to go. And what it does do at the very end of the plan and the report then is give some overview statistics of performance of the service. It sets out some of the strategic performance indicators and our performance against them. Some budget and financial information. And then very importantly, right at the end, aligned with the Welsh language information, is the promotion around our social media aspects and how members of the community can communicate with us and options for them to sort of get engaged more widely in the future. So the plan is, I think, complete. Hopefully, we get approval from the commissioners today to set those strategic themes out there are in the published format that we got. And then we can meet our reporting deadlines and get this as a wide scale of plan going forward for the next year. Obviously, this progress report will be coming too throughout the year as well on how we how we will be progressing against those actions that we've set out for the following year. And in a similar vein to what Lisa said, with the financial detail. It is always, you know, the plan is movable feast, but we will be reporting to any changes and any improvements. And just getting you the reassurance the work is ongoing, whilst you're getting your feedback on the progress that's being made. So I'll pause at that point and take any questions.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to turn to the chief firstly. So you've got your forward and your introduction and your overview of this. So I'd welcome your comments.
So ultimately, as Gareth has described, this is the most reasonable basic obligation to provide a plan. I'm quite happy that it contains all the areas of priority and all this. We currently have in place, it does touch in the plan, and this has already been spoken about previously in relation to some of the strategic performance indicators we have as an organisation. We will be working up a wider suite of performance indicators in the future. These are the ones that are statute terribly reported into Welsh government. And our internal government structure that we are working on right now, a series of committees that will all have performance metrics that we can measure. So the next iterations of the plan will have that wider suite of performance measures for us to report against them, like a correct degree of satisfaction assurance to commissioners for that. This report is getting it live within these, that street timelines then, and the time which is slightly out of control. Within the next iteration of the plan, then we'll have that wider suite of indicators. Other than that, I'm very pleased with what has gone into developing the plan in short time.
Thank you very much. Karl Anendic, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. A couple of points really. Firstly, Gareth, I can really see how the plan has developed from the one that we shared. So well done to the team that pulled it together. And Stuart, I'm really glad to hear about the wider performance indicator. I think that's really positive for the health of the organisation, isn't it really? Couple of questions then, really for me. Do we review the plan on a twelve, I know we have the iterations to go through. Is it go through a formal review on twelve monthly, Gareth, around where we are? And also, just probably more for you, Stuart, of how do you kind of institutionalise the plan for the internal audience, really? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. How do you make, so it's, so Karl, I recognise that statement from how do we move it from a paper document into something that's real and live and engaged by the workforce and with the workforce? Yeah, I get that.
So I want to start by suggesting that we socialise it in a variety of different ways. We want in place systems and internal structures with a golden thread throughout the organisation to start with station plans and community risk management plans at station level, which reference in both directions or all the other tiers of plans which come together so that there is that golden thread of activity that you can say. Activity that's taking place at station level really has a part to play in achieving the organisational wider strategy. And people can actually see that they are making the necessary moves in that direction. And we socialise it in ways which are, you know, not as sort of break it up into smaller chunks and be able to sort of communicate at various stages through our publications, but also through all the documents. And we engage our managers, particularly our middle managers, in sharing these messages and support teams. So it's a piece of work to develop staff at various levels to understand the part that they play in taking a plan from a written word into actual implementation and activity, which will be reported on and signed vertically in both directions.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Obviously, there was two aspects, Karl. The first one was around the sort of development of the plan and the reporting of it. What we do is sort of halfway through the year, so probably around about the August time, we'd be fetching the sort of draft of the the sort of the basic structure of the plan that we'd look to go out to that consultation process with. So before we do that wide scale consultation, it's almost a sort of rejig of the plan. Is it fit for purpose? What are the elements that we know we need to be built into it for future planning? And so that's the stage it goes through there. Obviously, post consultation, then we will be bringing back to the feedback from the consultation. So that'll be sometime towards the end of January, early February in readiness then for developing the final plans. And that's the stages it goes through. Plus the ongoing, as I say, quarterly reports on progress against against the strategic themes and all the actions identified within. And they're quite sort of detailed reports on all the workers ongoing right across the services, just meeting every requirement in there. And just picking up on the chief's point about that golden thread. What we try to do consistently in setting the strategic themes is to have a golden thread also with the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act and the social economic duty. And they'll, obviously, they're reflected in the strategic themes, but they'll also be then reflected down into the record level plans, departmental level plans, business plans, all the way down to the CRMPs. So there is that golden thread right the way through, not just of what the plans for the organisation are, but the wider plans, you know, across Welsh government and the public sector. So we meet off our statutory requirements. But it is because we've got that same aim and ambition as Welsh government, you know, to make Wales a better place. So we have got that golden thread right the way through. So hopefully, by publishing it, you know, it is a public document. So, you know, the communities can see that what our aims and ambitions are. But more importantly, as the chief alludes to, every member of staff can see how, what they do feeds into the process and feeds up to all the plans that we're going to get on. So I hope that covers off that point.
Thank you, Gareth. But bringing us to where we are and why we're here, it's more important than ever that that isn't a paper document, that's a living, breathing action plan of how we, you know, how we are working together, engaging. Because of where we've been, that, you know, that really has to be a way forward.
And that was one of the key themes identified around internal, external comms. And the need for us to get better at that, and that was identified in the culture review. It was also identified in the feedback as part of the consultation process with this. And that's why we've got comms team members here today as well. And the one thing I missed to say is probably, you know, for our record, the thanks for the service performance and communications team have done in getting us to this point and developing such a good document, but also the flexibility we need then to be able to adapt it now into the format to meet all the requirements of a very much of a sort of changing landscape.
Yes. And a continually changing landscape, as you noted about the performance indicators. Vich, please.
Thank you. Echo what Karl was saying, particularly about the wider suite of indicators. And I think we need to make sure that we put a qualitative element into those performance indicators, because it's quite easy sometimes to come up with quantitative easy indicators, which don't tell us as much as the qual would. My point goes back to the CRMPs. I suppose it's about my level of understanding on this. In most fire rescue services in England, in all fire rescue services in England, CRMP is the driver behind a lot of activity. It's, I know there isn't a requirement, I gather there's not a requirement to have one in Wales, but we have got the local CRMPs at station based level, but there's nothing that's overarching in terms of a strategic approach. Now, I gather in North Wales, and Stuart probably much closer to this than I am, that they're looking at a way of coming up with a brigade based CRMP of which the local station based CRMPs, the community risk management plans, would then have a framework on which they operate. And then it would be a way of the organisation targeting its reduction and approach to risk. So where are we in terms of how we approach CRMPs strategically within the organisation? Thanks.
So you're quite right, Vich. The approach that is being taken in North Wales is to follow a very similar approach to the one that's being taken in England. As you quite rightly say, there's no statutory responsibility or requirement in Wales for CRMP. And I believe the approach that's been taken in Wales historically has been a slightly different one. But ultimately, in terms of making sure that all risks are considered appropriately and overarching framework is in place that then resonates throughout all of the sub plans that go all the way down to station level. Then I can certainly see the value in that. In terms of working towards that in the next twelve month period or the next iteration of an amended type of plan going forward, it doesn't have to be exactly the same as in London or North Wales. It has to be a different purpose for South Wales. It's something that the team, I know, have already got in mind to start to think about and work upon. But clearly, the guideline or the statutory requirements for publication of this plan meant that this is the last iteration in this format. For the next iteration of the plan, we'll take into account some of the things that you raised.
Yeah, if I can answer that, obviously, I think to not quite respond on you, this is the last iteration in this format. What we'll be looking to do and the service performance communication team are working collaboratively with the other two fire rescue services as well. But it is looking at a new sort of planning framework, which will meet those requirements and meet the ongoing sort of changing statutory requirements as well. So it's going to be building a robust process specifically around the social partnership and public procurement act.
Which is fairly new for everyone. And, you know, just as the Future Generations was new years ago and we had to adjust accordingly, everything, we just need to do that. The social partnership, but as long as we're on the track, you know, and moving in the right direction, to use another phrase. Kirsty.
Yeah, thank you, Debbie, and I thank you, Gareth, for the report. Just wanted to pick up on the drop in engagement in consultation exercise that is mentioned on page one hundred and one of my pack from previous years. And understandably, that might be as a result of consultation keys within the organisation. You know, there's going to be lots of, you know, lots of stuff going on, asking people for their views, and I can understand that. But, you know, the figures, the engagement figures seem quite quite low and a drop on where they have been. And I'm just wondering, you've just mentioned the work of the comms team about, you know, how we can begin to think about how we can address that for the next consultation so we can get a better, a better level of engagement. It is what it is this year, but recognizing that we probably want to do better for next. And then forgive me. So at the end, you mentioned Welsh language. Doesn't, it says here that we are obviously required to fulfil our obligations under the Welsh language standards. But it doesn't say whether we're meeting those standards. So I'm just wondering, when we talk about the compliance of this, what does that mean? And are we, are we meeting our requirements under Welsh language standards?
Yeah, we've always met our requirements under the Welsh language standard. What we do is obviously have an ongoing process where they check our progress and check how we're meeting compliance. Very often, they come up with areas that we need to improve on. And sometimes, you know, they will actually change what the requirements are in terms of we do have certain exemptions within the service, which allow us to conduct business like this, for example, you know, purely in English and not bilingually. But all of our public facing documents have to be bilingual. But they are checking, you know, they do check it. I think we're currently in the period of review. So the Welsh Language Commissioners, I believe, met with Alison fairly recently. So they are looking again at, you know, how we are meeting those requirements assessing and checking that we are fully compliant with where we need to be for what they've said for this service.
I just think that if we're meeting it, we should celebrate that. We shouldn't be shy about talking about the fact that we are doing a good job in that regard. And if we're not, we should be upfront and open about how we're going to address those shortcomings. But I don't think we should be shy. What you're saying is they're happy with us, then we should be, you know, celebrating that recognizing that we're meeting those obligations.
And picking up the point about the engagement of, yeah, so we we were completely aware of the fact that it has dropped this year and that probably a lot of the engagement we get around the plan does come internally from staff. But I think with so much engagement going on around the culture review and everything, that this was probably lower down in the pecking order of things.
One connotation too far.
But it's certainly, you know, an area we always look to try and improve on every year and, you know, we constantly refresh in our stakeholder engagement lists and groups. So it's, and it's a different landscape, you've got different connections. So that stakeholder group perhaps will take a different emphasis and, you know, we'll we'll take advice from yourselves as to perhaps how, using your knowledge and experience from different stakeholder engagement, how we can improve going forward as well.
I just think, you know, it's an interesting temperature check, isn't it? And how the organisation is feeling about levels of engagement. You know, I think higher the moron, better things are, that tends to get higher engagement. So I think it's a really useful temperature check and how people are feeling.
And in terms of celebrating the positive, to pick up on Kirsty's point. You know, we had an excellent two day interview session last week for our new retro transformation that included stakeholder groups. And we had, you know, very positive feedback from them and some very good levels of understanding. So, you know, small steps, but, you know, let's celebrate that step. That was very good.
Yeah, just going to to Kirsty's point, which I think is an excellent opportunity for us actually to, because ultimately it is not unusual to get low levels of engagement to this kind of document. Because ultimately, unless there is something that's of significance, that's going to be proposed and changed, then ultimately, it's difficult. But we can do more in terms of our engagements and our strategy around that and the cost in terms of building the infrastructure and support around it. But I don't think there's ever been a more important time to, to speak, get out there and speak to our public about what we're doing here in fire rescue services in South Wales. And so I'd say you've really well made, and thank you for that. I think we'll, we'll need to develop a strategy around future engagement going forward, because we really need to, to understand whether we're getting it right for our communities.
Yes, and just in terms of, you know, local government experience, it's about being proactive instead of reactive, telling people what we're doing instead of having to react to them, you know, complaining about issues, which is a natural course of events in local government. But nevertheless, you know, the, the fire rescue service has so much positivity. Let's, let's do what we can to engage that. So, so to my commissioner colleagues, then, we're looking at approval of this report, strategic themes and objectives, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, everyone? Yeah, thank you. Now we move on to item six, strategic performance indicators, and Dean, you please.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so the report for consideration is the strategic performance indicator targets for 2024 to 2025. There are three recommendations for the commissioners to consider. Firstly, that the commissioners note the performance indicator targets for the following business year. Secondly, that the commissioners approve the allocation to myself for service delivery to review core performance data, and that's for the current year that we are in. Then to plan any reduction strategies and refine any targets as necessary for the following business year. And thirdly, that the commissioners approve publication of the targets on the South Wales Fire and Rescue Service internet site. So the cover report gives a little bit of a background, because obviously, the performance indicators are a statutory requirement under the local government measure of 2009. So it means that we have to comply with that overall report, which is normally towards the end of April, early May, and then our report is published and presented to Welsh Government on seven strategic performance indicators. And those seven performance indicators are broken down, so there are four incident-based indicators, food fatality and injury indicators, and there's one on an effective response indicator. Within the report as well, it just identifies that the methodology for how we set the targets going forward as well, and the statistics of the risk team utilise a profiling process. And what we consider is the nine months for the year that we're currently in. And then we'll have the end of quarter four, probably towards April time, which will identify any trends and monitor any patterns. But they also use incident data from the four previous years as well. And that's taken into consideration as part of that methodology of setting the targets and projections for the following year. So appendix one is, is attached to the report, and this gives us a little bit of a breakdown for each of those seven performance indicators. So if I talk you through, and I'll just highlight some of the key areas within the attachment of appendix one. Now, the first performance indicator is all fires attended by the service. And you'll find in the top left corner there, it gives you an actual number of 2022 to 2023, prediction for the current year that we're in now, and obviously then a projected number for 2024 to 2025. And that's utilising that data sets for the last four years and the current nine months that we've got of the current year as well. Some of the key highlights from the all fires attended, that, that for commissioners to consider will be that proportion of our refuse fires account for 42% of all fires, that's compared to 45% of the previous year. Our grass fires account for around 20% of all fires as well. And that's a reduction, and our vehicle fires is reduced as well, but that comes for around 10% to 12% of all fires as well. The project, the projection of 5,743 anticipates what we would call a marginal increase on the current year. And this confirms the service's aspiration to limit deliberate fires, because we undertake a considerable amount of partnership working with stakeholders at our local communities as well. I think it's worth noting that obviously as part of this data, each and every single operation that we attend requires that incident commander then to undertake an information gathering process. They feed that into an electronic database, and that allows us to collect this data, then monitor any trends and themes that we can pick out of. That helps support the strategic themes that Geraint's just presented on, but also feeds right down to local level on our stations in terms of the local community risk management plans that we've just discussed. So this data, the evidence, helps shape some of those local initiatives that we will distribute out across our local communities. And that will be distinct and really in a silo effect to what is needed within each locality. So it won't be the same across all 47 fire stations.
And there are particular issues, obviously, not that really, you know, with the demographic and the geography of South Wales, so like the grass fires wouldn't happen in perhaps other rescue services in the same way that it does here.
That's right, Chair, yeah. So predominantly, our, our grass fires or wildfires were predominantly here on the Kynetaf area, for instance. So what you will find with the community risk management plans for those stations is that they will use a lot of educational activities, go to schools, et cetera, talking around the dangers associated with those type of fires to try and educate. But it'll also be a partnership with some of the local community farmers, for instance, and some of the local authorities in terms of how we can address probably some of the controlled burning at some of those areas that were affected by each, each year, every year.
Sorry, forgive me, and I suspect the answer is it's got something to do with this four-year average, but the figure looks like it's going the wrong, the wrong way from 24 to 25, more than predicts, prediction for this current year. Is that, can you explain that? Because that looks like a bad thing for, you know, a non-expert.
No, no, it's, it's a great question. So the four-year annual data from the previous, previous four years gives what's called a weighted average. So it'll give you an indication or projection of where you feel those following year's targets are going to be set. It also takes into account then the current nine-month data for this current year. And then we'll address the end of quarter four, probably sometime in April, the end, end of year data. So it gives us a weighted average, and that was called an exponential weighted average, which counts for the last four years as well. So it takes, there's a database and a process that's sat electronically to give us a weighted average.
Fidge, I noticed you've got a question.
Only if Dean has finished his presentation, I've got some questions for her at the end. I'm happy to wait till then.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to you then. Dean, please.
Thank you, Chair. So the next performance indicator highlights all false alarms attended. And there is obviously, from the graph data there, you can see that there's a year-on-year increase in terms of those calls, profiles that we attend. We're also looking at implementing the recommendations of the recent audit Wales report on reducing fire false alarms. So the prediction for 2024 to 2025 is forecasted to be 8,560. But this will be revised following that quarter four data that will be compiled and presented around quarter four. But it is highlighted within this report as some of the data that that target or prediction is likely to rise, because we've got some recent attendances, which is really spiced through the last first two quarters of this year. Next indicator.
Sorry.
So, yeah, so it's obviously related to the unwanted fire signals element of this report or this, this category, because clearly unwanted fire signals are very much a focus of the commissioners' references, and as Dean already alluded to, the audit, and the work prior to that. Other services have made significant improvements to reduce it in these numbers over previous years, and we are very much committed to doing that here, too. But I think the, the target recognises the fact that there's a leading to achieving, wanting to achieve in terms of unwanted fire signals reduction. And that leading will, will take us to socialise with our communities, with the public, what actually needs to happen instead of us automatically attending. So an unwanted fire signal and a false alarm is, is not an indication of fire, it's an indication that a system has activated, and that system will go through a monitoring company, which will then go into the fire control room and a fire engine will be mobilised. This is recognising that on most occasions when that happens, it's not actually a fire. So the proposals going forward will be, unless the speaking of that fire 999 call from the responsible position or the morocco power of that building, then we won't attend. However, there will be some exceptions to that, and those exceptions are being refined. We're trying to do that in partnership with West Wales Fire and Rescue Service, based on the fact that we have a joint control room, so that we're both using the same categorisation of what we will and won't go to. But very clearly, the places that we will continue to go to are places where the sleeping rest is putting on heavily, and people, so for example, care homes, hospitals, and places like that, and hotels and the places that have sleeping rest during night-time hours. So that is being finalised, that then will need to be socialised with our communities and a period of education for communities to make it clear what their own responsibilities will be. So that's not a short piece of work, that's only a little taste of time, which is why it may seem, you know, counterproductive to have a target that is in place, that is still a high number for the next financial year. We don't want that, if that makes sense.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. Dean, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, and I, I think the one point I didn't cover off there was within the narrative for this performance indicator, it gives some indications and predictions in and around what those changes could, if implemented, what those predictions could look like. So it does give some data in there, you know, if that's what we're going to be from there next year.
Yes, down by a couple of thousand.
Yeah. The next performance indicator is road traffic collisions attended. And there is a decrease reported within the current year and obviously predicted numbers for the following year as well. So the percentage of, the data that we look at importantly for this one is the percentage of extrications when we attend a road traffic collision. Not every incident will require us to mechanically extricate somebody from a vehicle. Majority of the time, it would just be undertaking some, making the vehicle safe, assisting with some casualty care. But on occasions, we will need to extricate individuals, but that performance is, is down to 18%, which, which is a great number.
And I have to, you know, note that, you know, the Welsh Government changes to the 20 mile an hour speed limit, although it hasn't been universally welcomed. Clearly, it's an indicator in the reduction of road traffic accidents, as the data demonstrates.
Yeah, so the, the impacts of the 30 to 20, they are yet to be fully evaluated. The service is looking at those. We continue to support that, you know, a more, a more, a more, a more profile.
Yes.
The last operational indicator is special service calls attended. So this is where we provide an emergency response, and this takes outside of what would be classified as statutory duties. So anything over and above what we will attend, and there's a wide umbrella of incident types and categories that we will attend, that is covered in the, in the special service calls attended. If you look at the graph, you can see that there's a clear rise, and a significant rise in the special service calls that we attend, and that's, that's evidenced every single year other than Covid year, where we're seeing less people out and around. Some of the highlights within here will be where we assist other agencies, that that is significantly increased. Included within those assisted other agencies will be categories of only biactive incidents in particular, which has been, seen an evidence of significant increase. Affecting entry and exit incidents, so that's where police or other colleagues from Welsh ambulance service are requesting our attendance to gain entry for them on their behalf. Notably, some other sad incidences where we've seen a rise in unfortunate suicide attempts, and I'll build the data to support our colleagues from other agencies at those types of incidents as well. But they, they are a significant increase as well. Water rescues, we're also seeing a significant increase as well. That's not really part of our statutory duty now, but we are seeing an increase. And that's been reflected in some of those local community risk management plans that we talked around. So some specific targeted initiatives and activities being run on some of our stations. I'll turn over the target setting for deaths and injuries, and this covers two indicators. The first one is deaths and injuries in fires. And there has been a decrease in the current year, which is worthy to note. But that number may change depending on validation of incident progress for quarter four data. There's unfortunately three fatalities in the current business year. Two of these were in accident dwelling fires, and the other was assigned to a vehicle fire. Serious injuries requiring hospital treatment is reduced, and we've seen a, a reduction in slight injuries as well. In terms of accidental deaths and injuries in fires, we also see the reduction here as well, which is lower than the previous year and lower than the previous target. Accidental deaths and injuries have reduced as well by 21%, which is, which is the credit to probably some of those local initiatives that have been around in the educational preventative activities that, that we push out across our communities. The service will continue to prioritise risk reduction activities, and we will target those agreed to risk in our communities as well, so is monitoring those trends, adjusting our activities, because our aspiration will always be to, to have zero fire-related deaths. And the last performance indicator covers what's classed as effective response, but this is particularly to the percentage of dwelling fires, which were contained and originally originated. Work is ongoing to identify factors contributing to the variance in, in this indicator in particular. And the things that we will look at will be travel times, so that's from the fire station to particular addresses, impacts of alarms and sprinkler systems, and any firefighting action that is undertaken at those premises as well. So we'll use that data to try and inform and support our vision going forward. That covers off the seven performance indicators, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dean. Fidge, I'll bring you in now then, as we finish the presentation.
Thank you very much, thanks, Dean, for the, the presentation. I suppose the, the first one I was going to pick up on was the AFAs, because I think that, that's obviously a, a specific area of focus for us, and I know there's a lot of work that is being done. But, you know, we are quite late to the table on this one. It's been talked around in the organisation for quite a while, and we are the worst performing brigade in our family group, so I welcome the, the more acute attention to the unwanted fire signals programme, because AFAs account for 48% of the calls that we go in. Unless we reduce the calls, we don't have the capacity to do the other things we want. So I'm glad that, that the chief set out where they're going, where we're going to be going in terms of AFAs. Just a couple of specific ones, and then, and then a general point. When it comes to the bariatric patients, I've seen this has been rising for a number of years in lots of organisations, but in part, it's because the ambulance service don't provide their own people with the kit, the numbers of people, the equipment, and the processes to do this themselves. So instead of them putting resources into doing it, it's offset and becomes part of our role. Now, where it's an emergency, and I fully get the, the FMR approach, I understand that, I think that's really important, but these aren't always emergencies, they are more procedural. So I think we need to think about how much supporting procedural work we get into as opposed to emergency response, that's one part. And then, as you mentioned at the end about the fires contained to the room of origin, that's a specific thematic that's covered in, well, there's components of that, one of the thematics looks at that in terms of firefighter activity at the incident. So it would be useful to see how all that pulls together. The general point I wanted to make was about these targets, because the seven, these are quite limited limited in, perhaps in scope, because if, there's nothing there about prevention, the prevention tactic, how many, how many visits do we do to homes that are targeted? How did we, if that had been part of the CRMP strategically, it would have had a target about a number of prevention based activities. Because at the moment, these are, these are sort of, I don't think they're as broad as they, they could be. So, I mean, I just welcome what the, what the thoughts of the officers were on how we look at prevention based activities forming part of the target, which then drives part of the business of the organisation in reducing the number of fires and therefore the number of injuries and deaths. Thanks.
Yes, I'll come to the chief next.
Okay. So thanks for that, Vish. And I think some of the concerns that you raised are trying with some of the concerns that I've also had. So in relation to the increasing calls to bariatric incidents, this is something which has steadily been increasing over the years. We have a partnership agreement under the law standing in place with that. And that is very clear, that we should be turning out to be an instrument of life threatening nature to require right when there are more routine things coming in terms of support to see incidents. That is not within the scope of what we should be doing. And therefore that should be brought back into his own hands as an incident, as and when those things come up. And we will address them on a case by case basis with our partners in WAS. I have actually got a meeting in diary with my opposite number in WAS coming up where that is on the agenda to talk about to reset some of that. Because you're quite right, there has been some slippage. They do have some resources in relation to our team and capability, but there has this area response team within the ambulance service, does have bariatric capability. But all too often, we are finding that we are being turned out into that space. So I will be picking that up with my opposite number in WAS coming up. In relation to the prevention suite of indicators that you talked about, and as I've already mentioned earlier today, that broader suite of indicators across the piece will certainly start to add a richer picture of information for commissioners. And prevention is one of those. Of course, the everything from on call availability all the way to rooms and numbers of smoke detectors installed and number of school visits and all of those things and everything in between to provide that richer suite of information that enables you all to have confidence that we are moving in the right direction is certainly being worked through at the moment. So that will be shared in due course in terms of what that suite of indicators looks like for your observations, comments and things that you think that you'd like to see in addition to what we pull together for you.
That's very comprehensive. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dean, for the report. And it's like thirty minutes long to help me understand it, I really appreciate it. And I'm just really pleased to hear the chief's commitment and Dean's acknowledgement of the false alarms attended work. And, you know, I understand that you just can't switch that off overnight. That has to be a piece of work. So making sure that we get some regular updates about how that work is being implemented and then the impact of that work, whether it's making a difference. Because I think we can't reach Geraint's goal of continuing to work effectively. We carry on doing it the way we're doing it. I think there's a contradiction in terms, aren't there? So I'm really pleased to hear that. When Vish was asking about that, though, you think about a family group. And I just wonder, back to the point you're here about benchmarking. So it's really important to see how we're doing internally, but it would be really helpful to know whether that puts us at the forefront, because that's where we all want to be, don't we? We want to be the best by service, no disrespect to any other fire services. But, you know, that's what we want to be, isn't it? We want to be the best, so that, you know, that's fine, that everybody has what working for the organisation is based on reality, not based on spin or smoke and mirrors. We can say I'm the best because I can prove why we're the best. So that would be really good to be able to understand where we sit in some of that. Can I ask about road traffic collisions? And, you know, the greatest fear I have of proud teenagers is young drivers and inexperienced drivers. And I just wonder whether the calls that you're going to to extract people from are predominantly, you know, is there a tilt towards young and inexperienced drivers or is it just across the piece? And I just wondered whether that forms part of your education work? Because, you know, I met some of you guys in the education team downstairs. I mean, their passion for what they do is irresistible, you know. But I'm just wondering whether that is part of your education work you do to scare the bejesus out of them really about driving properly. I mean, I know my own children, a visit to their local fire station in Brecon, you know, really did give them food for thought about how they were going to behave either on the road or thinking about getting on the road. And then, and then the bariatrics, can I play devil's advocate for a minute on the bariatrics? So if you're looking to do it, who is going to do it? So is there something fundamentally wrong with the fire service, fire rescue service performing that role in our society? I take it at the moment that it's outside the scope of the memorandum of understanding. But, you know, is there a wider discussion there to say that actually is a legitimate thing that we do as a service and that has to be properly organised? Having spoken to Brian this morning, it seems to me that people are doing it because they are committed to their community and want to serve their community. But are we, are we making sure that our people are doing that safely and not a risk to them, to themselves? So I just want to play devil's advocate. It's like, okay, if we don't do it, and I know we're not supposed to be doing it at the moment, but do we move to a situation where we do do it and we're properly resourced to do that and we're properly trained to do that?
So I'll pick up the last one in order to that, okay? So the issue in relation to bariatric, the way we are set up currently as emergency response services, we respond if there is an emergency. We respond if somebody's needs are such that are away threatening work, we call that person to see if we can, the duration in terms of their life and their health, then we will respond on every occasion in those circumstances. What we're talking about here, though, is routine hospital checkups or visits that we are getting called into to assist with things like doors or making a pathway through. Now, you are then stepping into the realms of broadening the role of a firefighter, which may well be the entirely appropriate thing to do in the future. And, you know, there has been a thematic specifically that looked at the role of the firefighter, which is a national change in conditions conversation in relation to how that all pans out. It may be that we do gear ourselves up into stepping into that space in the future to support another agency that is significantly struggling to meet its need in that space. And that might be entirely appropriate in the future, but we're not there yet as a sector as this is a national issue, not, not just a South Wales or even a Welsh issue. It's a national one. You're quite right to raise it, though it may well be the model thing to do going forward. And we may need to support our partners in a variety of ways around health as well as other partners. But we're not in that space nationally just yet. In relation to the question that you had in relation to road safety, yes, you were quite right. The higher proportion of people who die seriously in road traffic collisions are aged between 16 and 25. The statistics tell us that. So therefore they are the target for our activities. As a community safety offer, then we work towards introducing something called Fatal Five, which is a programme which gives education and support to people just as they're about to embark on their driving journey to make it very clear to them what the risks are. We were also supported in my time in North Wales, as a fire rescue service. And the impact of this, of course, would resonate across Wales, is we've supported campaigns to have black box installed in cars for all your people when they're starting their driving journey to enable them just to act more responsibly behind the wheel. There's been very many programmes over the years, which have let us kick it left down. Accordingly, a revolution project is ordered to bring people who were maybe on the cusp of getting themselves in trouble. They may be more likely to be reckless behind the wheel and so working with those people as well. So there's lots and lots of programmes that have gone on over time, but the group of people between 16 and 25 are very much targets for that work.
As you're talking, you know, I can think of, you know, there was that terrible incident in Newport then, another incident really quite ideally, wasn't it? You know, it's, so you're absolutely right, you know, you just see these terrible things you see in the news and it's, it's young people. So.
And I do wonder, with the government's catch to the police and schools programme, you know, whether, you know, that's coming to an end. I know some police and crime commissioners are trying to fund that themselves locally to keep it going. You know, but that route is going to be stopped potentially, so.
So it may have further implications back, you know, any other examples, something getting back onto the service. Right, so we have to, we have to notice the performance of those targets, approve delegation for service delivery and approve application targets. So are we all agreed?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we're now on to item eight, potential governance structure. And that's on page 185. And over to you, Geraint, please.
Thank you. This is a sort of a fairly simplistic look at the view that we're going forward. And obviously, it's, I think, as I said a few times, we're in that period of change. We've got a new, new structure that obviously sets as the board of commissioners, which is the first sort of form of meetings today. But below that, we need to put in place a structure to support you as commissioners going forward, but also to discharge some of the day to day workings of the service. But cover off also some of the statutory functions that we need to, but can be done at a slightly lower level than everything coming through before. What you don't is generous, you know, these meetings will take all day otherwise.
It is two and a half hours almost now, you know, because stuff was at the end.
So the suggestion is, and as I say, very simplistic view, but, you know, and there will be more work ongoing, we've been done on the back of this. But it's to have a board of commissioners and sitting under that sort of four set committees, finance audit committee, people committee, local pensions board and a culture review programme governance committee. The local pension board is, there's a requirement, a legal requirement for us to have that as part of the firefighter's pension scheme. So that's one that we have to have. Obviously, with a finance committee, we'd be taking reports based on, you know, financial performance, financial monitoring, internal audit, those type of reports, you know, the ongoing monitoring progress against, you know, various strands which would naturally sit under a finance committee. I think, you know, that's the purpose of that. People committee, then, you know, we'd look at the traditional things like the pay policy statements, gender pay gap reports, the developing work that needs to go on, you know, to get us into a position at the end. But then you'd also have sort of regular reports on sickness monitoring, your statistics around the makeup of the workforce. You'd have information around complaints, grievances, discipline rates, not just complaints. Obviously, we will get a lot of compliments in the service. So those type of data, I would expect to go through the people. The culture review programme committee obviously is a bigger piece based on the requirements for you as commissioners to discharge your terms of reference. So there's sort of two key strands to it, is the recommendations of the culture review report in itself and then the thematic reviews, the areas that were identified in the thematic reviews and any of the other bits that were identified, like the automatic fire alarms reduction. So the sort of structure there is to have an internal service review board, which would be chaired by the chief, so an ongoing day to day basis. And then underneath the working groups that have been set up to look at each of those those key sort of key areas of work which are identified in your terms of reference, plus the four themes that we've identified, the four working groups as part of the culture review working group. So that's the simplistic view of the structure. In doing that, obviously, what we want to try and do is get in place a calendar of meetings throughout the next financial year. So that we know as officers what we're working towards. We can develop a robust forward work programme for each of those areas by yourselves as commissioners. And then, you know, obviously, we're still in that period of trying to develop. But what we want to do very early, sometime in April, very early in April in fact, is get a more robust structure, which will allow us to have a detailed, we'll plan for each of those areas, give you more assurance, give you more support around commissioners by, you know, just one of the things that got on that paper there is things like having a quorum, a quorum to commissioners, because there's going to be times when all four commissioners are available.
But that quorum would be in person and online?
Yes, yes, as long as there's two present, whether in person or online. And yeah, that would be classed as quorum. But then, is there other support that we can use? So is there independent members we want to draw in to support those committees? And obviously, look at a scrutiny function, but that's something that we can consider perhaps in one medium term. I think obviously, key is day to day requirements, statutory requirements, getting those over the line first. Scrutiny can come at a later date. Sarah and I, as monitoring officer and deputy officer, are obviously going to meet in a range with yourselves as commissioners on the 12th, I think. And that will look at a more robust process around this. The plan is for Sarah and I, next week, we're going to redraft the constitution. If you're happy with this as a sort of initial layout of the governance structure, what we'll do is redraft the constitution to meet that. We'll have sort of more robust terms of reference for each of those committees. And we'll have a governance framework which will sit perhaps more neatly with this then, which will get more detail as well, as the internal governance structure, which covers it all also. So there is a holistic view, but if commissioners are happy with that overarching view, you know, I'll come back to in the, probably the, throughout April and then in the May meeting, we'll formalise a governance structure and approve the constitution going forwards. Obviously, the scheme of delegation sits as part of the constitution as well, so that will need perhaps a piece of work as well to see how that aligns to this revised structure. And then going forwards, obviously, it is, you know, the forward work programmes then would be developed to meet off what we know as the statutory timescales. But as the working groups are developing, as the working strands and, you know, those specific key pieces of work for you as commissioners are drawn up, we'll have dedicated reports coming back to as progress reports throughout the year. So what we've tried to do is develop a calendar that sort of spreads it evenly across the financial year, try not to overload it. So there's, you know, there are meetings pretty much every month, but to try and sort of chunk up the work so that it's a bit more smooth out throughout the year, rather than everything in its totality coming back to a single board of commissioners. So if you're happy with the proposal there, obviously Sarah and I will go away next week and just work up in a bit more detail and then that'll come back to you. But what we want to do is get those meetings scheduled in the calendar as early as possible so that all officers know that the timescales that they're working towards and get the reports ready for you.
Thank you, Geraint. What I would ask these on behalf of commissioners, we have an away day next Friday, where we will be discussing in much greater detail such items. Any information you could send us before Friday? I understand, you know, it's a shorter week next week or whatever, but anything you could have to put the flesh on the bones of this, that we have something substantial to discuss. So for example, independent members, who are you thinking of? You know, from what, who would you draw that from? Who needs to be what? I mean, I know we've made some mention about, you know, the local pensions board and all that could be an officer and not one of us. So it's those kinds of things, if you could help to point us in the direction so we can come up, because this isn't, you know, we don't have the detail here now to do that, but we will be able to get back to you so we can have a really, really full meeting on the 12th. Because I understand that you have statutory obligations, we have to meet those. And scrutiny is absolutely important for public assurance that we are doing what we do and of course for our government to see that. of course for our government to, to see that, um, that this is working. So, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. Kirsty.
Yeah, thank you so much, Garan, for this. And I can understand, uh, from an officer's perspective, having like the dates in the diary, so who really knows what they're working to do is really, really, really helpful. Uh, um, I do wonder though, whether, back to your efficiency point, whether this model is the most efficient model. I'm very fussy that half people don't want to be stuck in a meeting all day, but I do wonder whether it's simply more efficient to do some of this business in this board, rather than set up a committee for the sake of having it. We all have a committee in Wales, don't we? We'll have a committee board, that's what we'll do. But, you know, I just, I just do wonder whether we, whether we need, and whether, you know, for the efficiency of everybody, because, you know, we don't want to end up feeding the beasts, do we? You guys got an organisation around, and we could end up feeding the beasts to governments, rather than actually allowing you guys to get on with the day job, and, you know, and that's really tempting, you know, because it's really tempting for us, because, you know, I'll tell you for myself, I'm quite an activist person, so I have to remember to keep my hands out of this. You know, my nose is in, because I've got to be curious, and I've got to be, you know, interested, but I've got to remind myself all the time to keep my hands out, because I'm not running the, running the service. And I just do wonder whether such an elaborate structure, which kind of fitted your fire authority, is necessarily the one we need, we need now. What I am interested though is independent scrutiny and independent oversight. So like Debbie said, we, we really need to know what your vision was for the kind of people that you would have, and I'm really interested in, in staff voice in that as well. Because I know that we've got the working groups, they're looking at specifically around the implementation of the report work. But I come from an organisation where there is a staff rep on the board, and, you know, and is there, you know, like bringing that perspective, and I'm just wondering about what are, what are, what's the scope for, you know, tell me if I'm making a mistake, but what's the scope for staff engagement? If this has, a lot of the report has been about, hasn't it? Even having their voice heard, and I just wonder whether in some of that, in some of that scrutiny you've got to stop. Should be done, it's fine. If you think that's the worst idea in the world, that's fine.
I remember a couple of things in, in what you've said there. Um, so the first point in relation to the, um, the work being done in, in this forum rather than in some of the others, and a completely different point in relation to efficiency. I suppose, um, we talked earlier though about socialising things at an appropriate time before the full, formal, um, decision is taken in a board. Um, and the ability to, the subgroups, if you equate to a previous regime of a fire authority, that they weren't public meetings, and I'm fairly sure they were public meetings.
No, on, on.
Oh, they weren't all public, okay. In North Wales, they weren't public meetings to that level, so that you could have that, that real sort of in-depth look at it, and then, and then have that opportunity to refine before it went to a full public meeting. Um, but, but that's not relevant in this case, of course. Um, in relation to, um, member of the board, um, what I would be expecting, I suppose, is that that staff voice has a fair amount of places internally to be, to be raised through our committees in relation to, um, engagement negotiation, as well as all the other avenues through the working. What I, I, I do think may be of value though, is that you have an opportunity for staff to come into this board and to experience what goes on here and be able to take that away, to leave the colleagues.
Yes, I'm just saying, you've got the employees and, and you, yeah, that'd be, that'd be simple, that's a really good idea.
You give opportunities for staff from, you know, fully being able to put in a session from different parts of the organisation, so that they are, um, being able to ask those questions, and following the board to, to, to understand the ability to be involved in in some work, you know, to explain maybe, and so on, but the, the ability for them to, um, uh, have that voice mechanism should be in place internally for that to happen.
Well, that's really reassuring. Can I take a point there? I mean, about career opportunities, so I'm hearing a variety of voices around this table, so sometimes people are being asked, you know, within, it's not relevant in this organisation, I come from an organisation where people are asked to present papers where actually there's somebody one, one rank below them that is actually doing the doing, and bringing them along to be able to, it's, it's been a really useful thing to have your own voices, but also career development opportunity. Because the next time they go for an interview and they're asked, have you got experience of presenting at a high level? They go, no. Because they've never been afforded that opportunity, and I just wonder, as part of growing our own and giving people career development, whether there's an opportunity being said, well, I want to bring someone else over with me to this board meeting, because what we're going to discuss in the person is, do you, are you still going to be passing that?
Yes, it's a, it might. One of the things that I've experienced in the past, which is, is, you saw before, you talked about the need for for training in certain areas, uh, prior to a board meeting, there would be a training session where you would bring somebody in who's got that level of expertise to be able to take commissioners through and, and, and have that additional opportunity for them to develop and, 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 and develop, develop the understanding of the business at the same time. So again, that's an opportunity, I suppose, that the, the reason why, and I proposed the membership of this meeting, um, previously, is because in my previous organisation, there was criticism of who's actually doing the do of everybody who's in this room during the meeting, who's actually out there doing the work, uh, and so I, I sort of suggested that the people with responsibility for the areas can come in. But if there is indeed where expertise and an honest mind basis, it's absolutely reasonable that that can happen.
Perfect, thank you, that's very reasonable.
I'll, I'll give you an example, I think I talked about it, Kirsty, last week. Um, when, when I was running Newport, so we'd have, um, reviews of results, and so the high schools, so they, you know, I had the head teacher and the chair of governors, and then I brought in the head of English, the head of maths and the head of science. And boy did we have some, you know, digging down into the detail, because when, you know, the people who do the jobs know what's going on in much greater detail than the house, you know, saying you don't know, do you know what I'm saying? It's about digging down. And, yeah, bringing the expertise and, and then that, that, that sense of what actually is happening there. So, so, um, uh, yeah, I'll.
Can I, can I come back?
Yes.
Send a voice.
Okay. I, I'll recall you.
Obviously, in, you know, in, in the, my, my view of the world, in, in the basis of efficiency, is, is not to try and overload you as commissioners, so that you can spread yourselves out, because a lot of the, the committee structure is based on performance, planning, um, policy development, things like that, which was, you know, been more linked to the day-to-day running of the services, you said. But it's, it's, it's something that you can sort of share amongst yourselves as, as, as commissioners, rather than all four of you having to sit through all those pieces of work on an ongoing basis. So, so that, that was the sort of the mindset behind that structure. The, the bit about independence, the, the idea I, I was thinking of, we, we used to have a standards committee, and we had five independent members on that standards committee, and they, they, they've gone through an appointment process, they, they, they're all completely independent of what was the old fire authority. Um, we, we don't need a standards committee now for yourselves, because you're, you're not elected members, you're not signing, you don't have to sign up to the, uh, Members Code of Conduct. Um, so, so the need for a standards committee isn't, isn't there in the same format. Those independent members have, have been stood down, um, we could easily call them, ask them for their availability to see if they would be able to support you as members on those, on that committee structure, if, if that's, if that's, you know, and that's just a suggestion, if, if you was, you know, want me to sort of look into that and progress that, you know, I think they, they're, they're available, they, they, they are totally independent, um, and, and they, they could be used in, in a different format to what, what we've used them for previously. So, so they would be a sort of an additional part of supporting mechanism for those committees, and then we could look at an additional scrutiny and say, and, and I don't think this, this is needed in the very short term, but for scrutiny going forward. It's always difficult to scrutinise yourselves, and, you know, in, obviously in larger authorities, you have you know, members that are made up outside of cabinets, or, or, you know, the, 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 the non-majority party played a big part in the scrutiny. Um, we haven't got, we haven't got the luxury of doing that. So, so I think that's something that we're going to have to develop, is, is a different model again, and perhaps, you know, using Welsh Government as part of that scrutiny role as well, is bringing them into, but I think, I think that, that's got to.
Well, they are scrutinising our work, that's.
So I think that, that's something that has to involve going forward.
Yeah.
But, you know, this, this just sets things up to try and smooth it out across the year, give yourselves a bit of less workload, um, and, and just share it out, and then focus, focus on the key areas, and ultimately the, the major decisions will all have to come back to this board for the final say-off.
If you could put all those things on that paper for discussion for us for next Friday, that would be very helpful, Garan. Thank you. Cal, please.
No, I, I, I don't, I'm clearly getting old and boring my eyes, because I do like a bit of governance and structure. So thank you, Garan, I thought the paper was really interesting. Um, I think you're right, there's a balance, isn't there, of, uh, you know, scrutiny approach, demand and work, and I think that the paper starts to get to there, uh, really well, that's really helpful. I think you, you're right, Chair, the fifth feels important around how do we want to work, and also potentially, you know, kind of our natural skill set around some of those areas, if we're going to go with the committee approach, which for me feels probably a good balance or a good starting point. But then looking at more broadly, Garan, the email I dropped you this morning around the rest of the meetings, and, you know, how many does it need, and that quorum piece going forward. I, I do think the independent governance piece just needs, and the independent support actually, probably just needs a little bit more thought, so. And there might be two elements to this, you know, Garan's talked about the, that those that have been taken on the past, but the paper I, I, I sent to, to everybody earlier on with Garan's applied, which was this more independent advisory group type principle for some of the work going forward. I think the two things potentially are slightly different. So absolutely, really like what is, is the progress so far, and anything you can get us by the fifth would be really helpful, Garan.
Yep, we'll do, certainly. Yeah, that, just, uh, as well for other members in the room, that, that wider group was, um, what we were looking at was, was around sort of external subject matter, expert support in implementing the, you know, the recommendations of, of the culture review.
Yeah.
And that would, you know, include people with, you know, governance expertise, cultural expertise.
Yes.
Um, race equality first, um, um, members of advisors for Welsh Government on Fowder SP. It, it was a broad.
Yeah.
Um, sort of audience that, that we, we discussed with the WRGA on who could support you as, as the board specifically around those.
The expertise that was there, isn't it?
Those who do street tests.
Yes.
So, you know, again, I think that would sit alongside that, 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 um, independent member supporting the committee structure, those would specifically focus on the the cultural review elements and the, um, the discharge of, of your terms of reference, those other people.
A lot to do then, but we'll get there.
Yes.
Um, okay, is there anything further on this from anyone? No? No? Okay, in that case, thank you, Garan, we, we have approved that and moved forward. Um, and we're now on item seven point one, people's service restructure, that's Alison, thank you, on page one nine.
Thank you, Chair. So this report's for information, but I am seeking your endorsement as commissioners and the chief fire officer in terms of the vision and the direction of travel. So what the report does is it formally sets out, um, the approach that we're moving towards and from. So from a transactional siloed space to a transformational customer at the heart space. Um, the Morris report rightly, uh, presented a recommendation around the need for a restructure within the people services directorate. And, um, essentially the headline is that we are reshaping the structure so that we move from a, a position of five senior roles to three senior roles with a layered business partner approach. Um, we've been able to do that as a cost neutral, um, perspective, because uh, reducing the number of senior roles has allowed us to recycle salary costs. Um, the appendices show the sort of as-is and the to-be model. The to-be is, is focused very much at the top end at the moment, because we are in a state of engagement and consultation with our teams. Um, so we started at the top level and are working down. Um, the proposals have been socialised with our senior leadership team, and they are very supportive of the move to a more business partnering approach, um, across the directorate. There is, uh, one area that I did want to flag with you, which is paragraph three point three point one on page one nine five. Uh, as we transitioned to this new model, we do see that we may need some additional resources on a temporary basis um, to help us get through the next twelve months. Um, one of those roles, um, in particular is an additional resolution officer, um, in addition to the resources that we've already secured there, um, and then some more admin support to help us just get our sort of, uh, process mapping in place and work towards that sort of transformational um, lifecycle approach, so hire to fire, so to speak, cradle to grave, so we're looking at, um, the process as a holistic, um, customer journey. That's as much as I wanted to say in terms of, uh, the, the report itself. Um, so seeking your endorsement of the overall vision, direction of travel and support in some temporary resources, um, to get us over the initial couple of phases. So that we can land in that, um, position.
Comments, please? Cal?
Yeah, thank you, Alison. I, I like the paper, especially like the, the kind of, um, uh, the formulation of diversity, equality, uh, uh, and community, that, that role. Query though, potential redundancies, um, is there anything likely to change in people's roles, so people may not want to come on your journey? And, and absolutely supportive of the extra resources, because it's, it is going to be a, a, a challenge to deliver.
Yeah, no, no redundancies, this is a, um, soft internal restructure. Um, and we've, let's say, used that, um, extra cash to recycle and, uh, you know, allocate money to that layer of business partnering, which, which will result actually in a succession plan, a career progression position for people. So, um, I think people are quite excited by what we've sort of socialised with them thus far, and we'll see it as a career journey rather than stepping into dead man's shoes, so to speak.
Chief, thank you.
Yes, so, so thanks, Chair. Um, so, so clearly, I think that the, uh, the paper sets out a real opportunity again for us here. We, we have a, um, situation where, um, we really need to focus on, on individuals and case by case, dealing with, with issues of behaviour performance, and well as support in times of need. Um, uh, I'm not, um, criticising the work that's gone on in the past, but people within, within the HR team, well, they've been working very, very hard, but they've just been working in silos. And that opportunity, as Alison has described, to, to take a, uh, an individual and work through them on their journey towards, you know, being back in the workplace or being, uh, having behavioural stress or whatever else it, it may be. And that holistic view of somebody, and it's, and it's dealing with people rather than a process and, and that sort of transactional computer says no type response, which, uh, we really need to get away from. And so I, I really applaud the opportunity for us to be focused on individuals' needs and supporting those individuals, uh, in the workplace. So I think that this is entirely the right direction.
Can I just ask the finance officer whether the financial issues are okay?
So that's on budgeted, that, under forty thousand.
Exactly, and we stepped up today.
So we would need to look at how we address that. Um, which we can do. Of course, if we spend all our budget as we set out when we came to you on the twelfth of February, there is only one way to service that, and that's through reserves.
I think in the budget setting meeting from the outset, that we recognised that the situation we're going to review with everything that we need to do needed to be funded through reserves, so that would be the appropriate place for it.
Yes, everything now aligned, so. Yeah. And, and we are in, um, you know, these are extraordinary circumstances, so we will try to work in an extraordinary way within, within the rules of engagement and finance, of course.
I, I think that in terms of the finances, for all these extra bits, we're looking at setting up a system to record all the new things that are coming in, that could potentially be funded by deferring or, um, postponing some of our works to get some of this stuff in, and that will give us some headroom within the current budget to be able to accommodate that before going to reserves. I think looking at this particular report, there's a finite period of time, isn't there, for that, um, transition, which is twelve months? But I would suggest that's a hard limit for us. us, in terms of implementing that and it come to an end, otherwise that becomes business as usual. And that's not just this report, it's all of those sorts of activities.
I think it would be really great if we could have a session outside of here about to understand and plan some of, understandably, to how you're going to plan some of that.
Yeah, not a problem at all, because I think that you do need to protect your reserves, they are the cornerstone of your financial planning. And there is a risk here, isn't there? I think we've got to be playing about that, so I think we can do some work around that.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, thank you. Gareth?
Yeah, it's just a conversation, I think we had the exact theme this week, and it's probably reflected in the way the budget was drafted and compiled, the budget process starts, for next, you know, we start in around about July time. So when the budget was put together, some of those what were priorities for departmental budgets may not be the priorities of the organisation, as they said now today, because things may have changed. So there may be opportunity, as Lisa said, to look for, you know, a way to absorb it into the budget, you know, there may be things that we look to stop to do, which were in people's plans, or there may be a direction that we say, you know, if this is clearly a priority we want to look at, we need to look for efficiencies in other areas, so it's just looking for those natural opportunities, I think, to support and fund things like this. As I said, you know, the reserves are there, sometimes it's good to demonstrate that we've got call on reserves, it's not always good to just have them sitting there with no use, it is good to show that you are using them. But, you know, as, I'm sure Lisa would support, you know, it's always good to show that if you are using reserves, you can generate efficiencies in future years as well, so it's not a case of just spending them, it's what do you actually get out of spending, it's being able to demonstrate that.
Because as I was often told, once they're gone, they're gone.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, the commissioners need to note the content of the report, approve the implementations of the new business model, so you're agreed? Yeah? Yeah, thank you. And our last question, my turn, at you, Gareth, page 203, forward work programme.
Very, very briefly, obviously, this is just, you know, it's established based on what we know on new, a few weeks ago, on what are some of the sort of statutory reports that we need to present to yourself, what are the ongoing commitment for developing reports in supporting monitoring progress and monitoring performance going forward? This is a developing piece, but as long as you as commissioners are happy with the format of it, whereby we have the report set out against the timetable, and set clearly of which reports are for information, which reports are for decision, and then you can take a view on whether reports are needed to go to specific time scales, or whether we, you know, have got a bit of flex in that. But some of them obviously will be hard, hard statutory deadlines, but others are based on need to get things through, like, you know, we programmed in May, you know, when the fire signals response, so there'll be key pieces of work for that. The main one which we've got to develop, I think, is around that culture review implementation committee board, as we said, it's what reports you'd expect for that, because it obviously is going to be a new one, but I'm sure you want progress reports on working groups, but also you'll want, you know, key pieces of work that you think will support delivering on those terms of reference, which may not necessarily flow through the working groups as well, so there'd be outside bits of work, but you will need dedicated reports attached to it, I think, so it's a better, perhaps, again, I've floated some ideas with you ready for your planning day next week.
I'm going to ask that, yes.
The types that they come to the front of that.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful, thank you. Right, so we note that, forward work programme, and thank you for that offer. We come to the final item, urgent items. I have known, but other than I would like to record at this meeting, our thanks to Chris Barton on his retirement, I've had the pleasure of working with Chris for many years previously in Newport, and we were very sorry to lose him from Newport, and I know that he's made, you know, a great contribution to the work of South West Fire Rescue Authority, so we wish him the best in his retirement. I wish he wasn't going, I wish I had an opportunity to work with him for a bit longer, but, you know, our very best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement, and thank you, dear Varian, amech gwaith, thank you very much for your work. And I declare the meeting closed.
Thank you.
Hello. No more attacks.